I told you there would come to be a lot of games.
How would you decide that? You change it?
As long as.
I don't know.
Like you could, I'm pretty definite, you know, if you could, I just don't.
I don't know if that's.
Whatever.
Other than.
Robbery of votes and stuff like that, so it'll tear them up.
I know.
City streets and I just don't know.
It wasn't from work, though.
Yeah.
Well, they ended up bantering out of our fishing trip.
Not that I've been involved.
Well, you did.
I sent you.
When you were kind of.
That was for.
Oh, I saw.
Okay, thank you.
Were you around this weekend?
So you stayed back.
Were you around this weekend?
Yeah, I mean, do we have an idea about racing or that?
We used Dave's truck to pick up a basket of Sally.
Before they could be honest to it. Yeah.
Well, we need to use the truck.
Yeah.
Much better. Oh, okay.
But I think it's. It's just in town, so.
Mm-hmm.
There wouldn't be other options than if it was less.
For February twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Move approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no, uh, is approved. Uh, this is proclamation day, this is going to be for the last day of the month, for rare disease days, allow me to read. Whereas, there are nearly seven thousand diseases and condition, conditions considered rare, each affecting fewer than two hundred thousand Americans in the United States, according to National Institutes of Health. Whereas, while each of these diseases may affect small numbers of people, rare diseases as a group affect almost thirty million Americans. Whereas, many rare diseases are serious and debilitating conditions that have a significant impact on the lives of those affected. Whereas, while more, more than four hundred and fifty drugs and, and, and biologics have been approved for the treatment of rare diseases, according to the Food and Drug Administration, millions of Americans still have rare diseases for which there is no approved treatment. Whereas, individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as a diagnosis delay, difficulty finding a medical expert, lack of access to treatments or ancillary services. Whereas, while the public is familiar with some rare diseases such as Lou Gehrig's disease and sympathetic to those affected, many patients and families affected by less widely known rare diseases bear a huge share of the burden of funding research and raising public awareness to support the search for treatments. Whereas, thousands of residents of Iowa are among those affected by rare diseases since nearly one in ten Americans have rare diseases. Whereas, the National Organization of Rare Diseases is organizing a nationwide observance of Rare Disease Day on the last day of the month of February. Each year, and patients, medical professionals, researchers, government officials, and companies developing treatment of rare diseases are joining together to focus attention on rare diseases as a public health issue on that day. Whereas, thousands of patients and caregivers, medical professionals, researchers, companies developing orphan products to treat people with rare diseases and others in the state of Iowa will participate in that observance. Therefore, I, Charles, had felt, together with the city council of the city of Waverly, do hereby proclaim the last day of the month of February will be observed annually as Rare Disease Day in Waverly, Iowa. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, so proclaimed. This time, I would invite any comments by the public on any items not on tonight's agenda items.
Duane Little, fourteen oh six Fourth Street, Southwest Waverly, Iowa. Question I want to ask is, on the budget, we have rebuilding of Cedar Lane Road, uh, ahead of repairing or rebuilding Twentieth Street Northwest. The council's gotten, received a petition from the residents living at Eisenhower Cass to wanting something done with that road because it is a high-crown, narrow road, and with the new box over it, it's a fairly steep ditch on, on the sides of that thing there. And I've heard people complain that it's a hard thing to drive at night and stuff, so when we had that windy stretch where we have a lot of snow blowing around, I drove out there to see what it looked like in the daytime. And I personally, even though I've driven cars in a variety of different ways, through a lot of different types of situations, I didn't feel safe on that road. It's, it's very narrow and it's, it needs to be rebuilt, and my question is, why is that be? I know that the Cedar Lane has been scheduled to be rebuilt so we can close the Horton Bridge and do some repairs on there and then route traffic. But in the past, we've always routed traffic over a street, then after the increased traffic was on that street and caused the damage that it did, then we rebuilt the road after the fact, so we could repair the damage and have a nice street that isn't partially tore up right away. So why weren't we scheduling the Twentieth Street Northwest project ahead of the Cedar Lane project, uh, when there's a need, an everyday need on the Twentieth Street, which will only be a period of time for the Cedar Lane Road? And is it possible, when we rebuild that road on Twentieth, to consider that a collector's street? Because there is quite a bit of development land out in that area, and that would be probably developed, that road was better shape.
Right. And that'll have to be part of our deliberations, I know that the people on the, um, Lover's Lane area have been waiting nineteen years, so I think they're in line too, but, uh, point well taken. Uh, before we ask for any other public comments, I'm going back to the rare disease, uh, do we have someone here, is Lori here to speak?
No.
In the back. If you're gonna speak, you can say a few, a few words up the mic, so the home people can see you and hear you.
Um, I'm Rebecca Lauk, and I am requesting that proclamation. I have a rare disease, and it affects one in ten individuals in the United States, so with Waverly being almost ten thousand, that means there's probably a thousand people in the city of Waverly who are affected by these diseases. And my goal is to have the community, um, just help show that support and let other families know that they're not alone, and, um, we're actually having an event at the state capitol on Rare Disease Day where Governor Branstad will be talking for us as well, so I just want to thank you for taking the time to do this and acknowledge it.
Thank you, Lori Carlson.
Thank you.
Appreciate the words. Going back to public comments on any agenda items not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we go to regular business item number one, which is an update from our golf commission.
Thank you, Mayor, before we do that, I'd like to talk to you about the Volunteer of the Year Award that the golf course does every year. Each year for the past five years, the golf commission and staff have selected a volunteer of the year. This year, the Warburg College Physical Plant has earned the, the designation. They have been very helpful to the golf course this past year, above what's expected when neighbors help each other out. Key individuals are Greg Westendorf, who couldn't be here tonight, and Jim Anderson. Jim, can you stand up for us? Their supervisor is John Wertz, who's the director of the physical plant. A plaque is hung in the pro shop with the names of the individuals and organizations that have been volunteer of the year. Thanks to Warburg College Physical Plant for two thousand and fifteen, and we'll give them a round of applause.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to introduce Brent Jones, he's the vice chair of the golf commission to give the two thousand and fifteen commission report. I also want to point out that Commissioner Brad Gade is present. Go for it.
Yeah. Good evening. Uh, I'm sure you've all received the report, I'll just highlight it, I'm not gonna read it verbatim. Um, we meet the second Tuesday of every month, and some of the highlights of two thousand and fifteen is we have a new, new pro shop manager, Jordan David, who replaced Greg Mason. Um, and one of the, uh, things that came about that you guys have proved is that, uh, Jordan has committed to staying in our pro shop for the next three years, and we are gonna put him through PGA school. He's a great addition to the pro shop and to the town. Second, the Mummifying Young Families donated funds to redo the entryway at the golf course. This is in honor of J.R. Iverson and Josh Young. Currently, we are rehabbing the three of the North Ponds, Baker Excavating is working on that right now. We also put together a five-year capital plan with our priorities. Uh, as we complete the projects, these priorities might change, and we will address that five-year plan, uh, annually. The city championship changed to a two-day tournament, was held in conjunction with Prairie Links, one day at each course, and that went over well. Uh, in another collaborative effort, uh, the youth program joined forces with Prairie Links, and we had the highest turnout for youth golf ever. Uh, we had Jordan David, Scott Thorson, Eric Sipple, and Josh Decum running that program. We had a slight adjustment of season trail fees, and also a new policy for non-golfer riders to pay a small token fee to ride on the city cart or the cart rental. As Tab mentioned, the Warburg Physical Plant received the two thousand and fifteen Volunteer of the Year Award. We also were very, the staff was very instrumental in the tree program. Thirteen trees were removed, but twenty-four new trees were replanted, and three ash trees were treated. And as Tab also mentioned, uh, Brad Gade, who's in the audience, was selected to take over for Clark Wilharm, who had to resign for health reasons. And that's the summary in a nutshell.
Stay right there, Brent. Uh, any questions, Brent, and this wonderful commission, and all that they do?
Just a comment, uh, I think it's impressive that our two golf, uh, item five, our two golf courses have found a way to work together on something. Uh, almost as significant as two kinds of Lutherans working together on something. Doesn't always happen.
Well, thank you, it's a step in the right direction for, for golf and for the town.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Regular business item number two is, uh, public comments on the Third Street Bridge. We've had, um, many comments, and it's been going on a year, but tonight we take a vote, so we want to conclude this effort with any comments tilted towards people who might have a new comment or something, or a fresh face, but, uh, public comments in general are welcome. Uh, we'll take up much time, up to thirty minutes, even if we need that much, I doubt it, but, uh, we do want to make sure that when the council starts to deliberate, they've heard everybody's voice. So I would invite any public comments at this time on the Third Street Bridge crossing.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Bill Kobliski, uh, and I live in the southwest part of the city, and I'm gonna read my statement because I'm not a professional speaker or anything like that.
That's fine. Thank you, Bill.
My information that I've received comes from these meetings and from our newspaper, for which I've established a title for reference. Um, and it is my opinion that we should rehab the Third Street Bridge. At these meetings in the past year and all the newspaper clippings, I see no definite plans to replace the Third Street Bridge. It seems that we're really kind of hot for new bridges, but, uh, we have no concrete plans in place. When the bridge was closed last February, uh, it appeared to indicate that the bridge was dead, that it was gonna fall down. Uh, now, a year later, it seems that that old girl still has life in her and can be reopened for a number, certain number of years. It also isn't clear that the bridge has been maintained in accordance with the Britain, the bridge inspections done by WHKS, uh, at least from what one can glean from the newspapers. Uh, perhaps the city administrator or the council felt it was a waste, waste of money. Uh, this issue really isn't clear, uh, and I didn't live here until the last year. Now, I've got an older pickup, has about a eight hundred and eighty thousand miles on it that I use around town, uh, to go over to the grocery store and things like that. Uh, once in a while, I see a new red pickup at one of the, the auto dealers, uh, and I think, gee, I'd like one of those, you know, it's really nice. But before I donate my old one to KPRI or some other charity, I have to go through a planning stage and see if my wishes are realistic, uh, like check my finances, see veridian about a loan, uh, or can I afford the payments with my finances. So, after sticker shock, I might conclude that it would be better and smarter to keep my old vehicle for a few years and save for one in the future. The same thing is sort of true for this bridge, as I see it. Uh, although the bridge needs to be replaced at some point, uh, it seems like it might be a good idea to keep what we have until the future bridges are made realistic. Thank you.
Beth Olson, four twenty-eight First Street Southeast. As a person who lives on First Street Southeast, I am one who has a sentimental attachment to the Green Bridge. Being able to walk, run, and bike on it as part of a loop in our neighborhood was one of the things that made life in Waverly enjoyable. However, as I look to the future of our town, I have to look beyond simply what's best for me and what I enjoy, as well as beyond my own sentimentality. As I've thought about the issues in the last month or so, it's become clear to me that our town stands to benefit from having a two-lane bridge, and we certainly need another bridge in town because of exit concerns and flood times, and to ease the overall traffic flow. Now, traveling back and forth from Wisconsin to Iowa in my college days, I crossed the Mississippi on the Wabashaw Nelson Bridge, the old one. The old bridge was distinctive, something of a nightmare, as it was narrow, had sharp ninety-degree turns in two separate places, and caused people to pray that they didn't meet another vehicle on those corners. The new bridge, opened in nineteen eighty-eight, is stunning, as it affords a magnificent view of the Mississippi River that a person could actually enjoy, because they're not white-knuckling it on those turns. While the Cedar is not the Mississippi, and the Green Bridge not scary to drive on, the opportunity to do something that reaches far into the future that will benefit generations to come is something I hope our council considers as they vote on the Green Bridge option, solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
I'm Marilyn Johnson, I live at three oh three Crestwood Avenue. Last week, I sent an email to everyone on the city council stating my view, which is to build a new bridge. The new bridge would be the most economical, would be long-lasting, when you think about you could divide that total cost by seventy-five, from the seventy-five-year lifespan, that certainly makes it more economical in the long run. Patching an, an old bridge, we don't know how long that's going to last, it could fall apart at the next flood, or the engineers are gonna find something else that needs to be done, and then it's gonna be closed again for two years or so. Southeast Waverly needs a new good bridge for emergency vehicles, southeast schoolchildren and parents, pedestrians, bikers, access to the business district. So again, I'm in favor of a new bridge. Thank you.
Marilyn.
I'm Larry Weiner from eight oh five Third Street Southeast, and I love the bridge because I miss it so much right now, but I'm in favor of building a two-lane bridge, and the reason is, if I was a businessman downtown, uh, right now, the only access to downtown is a Bremer Avenue Bridge. If something would happen to that bridge, there'd be no access to downtown unless you go clear around and, uh, come back on the one up here by the utility. So I think it's inherent for the city's stake to have a two-lane bridge so they have access to the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Duane Little, fourteen oh six Fourth Street, Southwest Waverly. I've spoken much in favor of the bridge being repaired. I agree with the, with the person who said we shouldn't be patching it because we'd be patching it every year, having the bridge closed. It's been patched and closed and patched and closed, that's not the method to do at this point. This point is to rehab all of the bridge at the same time and, and bite the bullet and get it over with. Two of the supporters of the, of a new bridge cite, cite the financial gains, which is the cost of the bridge divided by seventy-five years. Well, that's not an accurate number, because in seventy-five years, we, we'll have repair costs and maintenance costs. We know how often we paint, the state paints the Bremer Avenue railings, and that's every three, four years they're painting those railings. I'm not quite sure how much that costs, but that cost of maintenance should be included in the cost of a new bridge over that seventy-five-year period to get accurate numbers. Now, I know at the last meeting, Mike said, well, how complicated do you want to make the numbers? Well, that's not making the numbers complicated, that's getting honest numbers. And when you look at repairing the Green Bridge, the city has stayed totally away from the person who could probably save us the most money and get that bridge repaired in a restoration matter, the entire thing, and, and save the, the money that would make the difference between the repair cost of the Green Bridge and the cost of a new bridge, not even comparable. But because we're staying away from that option, so we don't want to know what that number is, so the public is being misled.
Um, but get to the point, I mean, rather than.
Well, these are all points.
Okay, but just the point.
The point of what? The, 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 the public and the council's being misled by inaccurate numbers and information?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. That's been happening.
No.
Yeah, well.
Well, I, 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 I think if you just state your point without accusing people, be helpful.
It's pretty hard to say a fathom, well, somebody said.
Try real hard.
Well, somebody said that they had a presentation at this podium, when the bridge was closed, that this is the reason this bridge is being closed, and they used pictures that were put up for the public in the council to see. Those pictures came from the two thousand and three study, and they were used because they did not, the pictures would not show the reinforcements that were made to compensate for the cross-sectional loss of steel in the affected areas. Now, if we're gonna work in, we talk about, well, we can put a two-lane bridge and we can connect it over to the Cedar River Parkway. Well, we'd have to run that across the Crestwood Park, I believe it is, where the bike trail goes down through, that's a flowway, it's an old backwater channel from the Cedar River. I don't think we can build a road right across that area, we'd have to build either a bridge, or we'd have to have a dip, we'd have to take out two homes up on the top, then we'd have to run traffic down, I believe it's Third in the Junkie Edition, before we could connect to the Cedar River Parkway. Junkie Edition has no sidewalks in it, kids walk to school, even with a little bit of traffic that's in Junkie, there's been concern about kids walking to school in the street. So the thought of putting a two-lane bridge so you could connect it to the Cedar River Parkway on Third and then on, over to, across the Green Bridge as a reason to build a new bridge on the Third Street location, really doesn't have a lot of merit, because it, it wouldn't happen. There'd be such an uproar from all the citizens in that area that'd be affected, you couldn't get that past the council. So that's really not an option. So when you hand out the financial information that's laying on this table right behind me, and you got all these various options, everything that's new does not have any maintenance costs in it. They have life expectancy costs of seventy-five years. Concrete bridges, when it gets to its life expectancy, the concrete delaminates, there is no repair, there is no patch to a concrete bridge. It immediately closes and you immediately replace it, that's your option. So at seventy-five years, the city will be facing a big, uh, down-the-road generation of council will be facing that, that same cost again.
Thank you. Over here.
Kevin Roney, third, uh, seven oh two Second Street Southeast. Uh, I just would state that I would support a replacement of the bridge. Uh, I think number one, uh, I'd like there to be vehicle, vehicular traffic over that bridge, so that's why I prefer either a replacement or renovation, just to allow, allow cars to go over the, over the bridge. Uh, I'm open to, to the idea of a replacement, to me, it does become a little bit of a cost issue, and just from what I've read and from what I've seen, um, it would make sense to me that financially it, it points to replacing the bridge, when you look at lifespan and all those sorts of things. I think it'd probably be fair to say that all bridges would require some level of maintenance, um, how much, that's probably hard to predict, too far ahead, but, um, looking at all those factors, for me, the cost does become a big issue where that's what tips the scales for me, is that, um, um, you know, a new replacement, um, seems to be a, a good option. That being said, I, I would be very, very open to restrictions and on, um, yeah, the types of vehicles that might be coming through the neighborhood, might be going over the bridge, um, just out of respect to, um, people that live. bridge, um, just out of respect to, um, people that live in that part of the, the neighborhood, and what they've lived with in the time that they've been there. So I'm curious to hear more about that, but would certainly be open to that if there is a replacement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Sheldrath, and we live at four twenty-third Street Southeast here in Waverly. Um, I'm representing the residents for repair. But before I tell you about our petition, um, I just wanted to share a few thoughts with you. My husband and I, along with many others, including some signatures on the petitions, were part of the Neighborhood Coalition form back in two thousand and three, when the Appointed Bridge Task Force recommended replacement back then. A neighborhood group rallied to present to the council a viable alternative, which was to repair the bridge, retaining its history, historic value, and the neighborhood atmosphere it creates by keeping it a single lane, limited weight and height restrictions. The beauty of this whole thing was that the council listened carefully, deliberated at length, and voted to repair the bridge instead of replace it. It was truly amazing government at work. We were so thankful, and it has served the neighborhood and Southeast Waverly very well. Now we are at a crossroads once again, and again we ask and even plead with the council to repair the bridge, to provide a safe crossing for a single lane of vehicles, keeping this outstanding part of our heritage intact, and thereby also voting to preserve the historic neighborhood atmosphere it maintains, which is busy and progressive, yet quieter and a safer way for residents in Southeast Waverly to live. So we are now representing the residents for repair of the Green Bridge. We believe the fifteen-to-twenty-year repair of the present historic Green Bridge is the best decision, not only for residents in Southeast Waverly, but the entire city. This would provide limited vehicle access similar to the past, and just right for a residential neighborhood. It would provide limited pedestrian access, which encourages pedestrians and bikers, and the Werkeberg Cross Country Team could run across again. Um, it would keep the crossing safer for children and families going to and from school. It would keep the larger, heavier vehicles off the bridge, restricting the impact of unwanted heavy traffic. And if it does become two-lane, we truly question whether, um, how much traffic will be limited or can feasibly, um, either through law, or even, um, what restrictions could be made. We aren't convinced that that will be an answer to limit traffic. Once it's two-lane, we can never go back. It will encourage the use of the bridge for recreational cultural purposes. Bikers can connect to the various trails. My husband and I have three grown children, but honestly, um, if we had our children yet in our home, uh, we wouldn't want to be sending them across a two-lane bridge with all the traffic, uh, walking to school. It will make a huge difference. We do all understand and agree that eventually, in the long-term master plan, a bigger, two-lane, faster bridge should be built in Southeast Waverly to accommodate our growing city traffic needs. We understand and certainly accept that. But the place is not here on Third Street Southeast, which is presently a way to connect to the trail system in this historic, original residential section of town, which, by the way, is on the historical registry now, which is really a great thing. The time is not now for the bigger, faster, better bridge. Our understanding, according to our city administrator, is that funds are truly available for all options. And with this in mind, um, we believe the lowest-cost option is not always the best. Many intangibles also factor into this important decision, including quality of life. Hence, we're representing residents for repair in Waverly. We know there are many other options for the future for the bigger, uh, bridge, and we trust the council that they would make a good long-term plan, um, that would not be in our residential area. So we trust you to do what's best that will affect not only our residential neighborhood, but the fine city for many years to come. And in closing, I'll just say that Ike Ackerman, we spoke to him about it, uh, in two thousand and three, in his words, he thought eventually it would become, um, a pedestrian bridge only. So we don't know, but for now, um, we understand it needs vehicles, but just one lane, uh, we believe would be an outstanding compromise. So we have a petition, um, and Paula will read, uh, from Chris Brunkhorst, who, who was one person who, um, brought that out to you, but you should all have, uh, five pages of signatures in front of you, from specifically residents in Southeast Waverly. Um, this was not scientific by any means, um, but if you look through and see, uh, many are on Third Street Southeast, um, in that area, just either north, and then some in south, um, south of the bridge. Uh, one, you might note on the last page, I believe, is Kim Bixler, and she's a Realtor in town and actually couldn't come tonight, but she was on the Bridge Task Force, um, back in two thousand and three, and, uh, she is for the repair, as are many of others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening. My name is Paula Servilla, and I live at three fifteen Third Avenue Southeast. This is, um, a, a letter from Chris Brunkhorst. Dear council members, on Saturday morning, I volunteered my time to assist with a simple canvas in Southeast Waverly, just the Green Bridge area, north and south. The purpose was to confirm the overwhelming desire of southeast residents to repair but not replace the Green Bridge. Although there are many option, opinions for solutions, I personally was surprised to find the majority of the residents I contacted were eager to sign the petition. They want it open, but do not want a two-lane bridge at that location. The simple petition stated, "Please vote to repair the Green Bridge, but do not replace it. Thank you." On Monday, each of you will be given copies of the five pages of signatures by residents, along with their addresses. The resounding theme was having it closed, was having it closed has been an inconvenience. It is an historic icon, very much worth saving, and they highly request keeping it a one-lane bridge for less traffic in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration of these signatures to repair the bridge. Chris Brunkhorst. P.S. The petition didn't address which level of repair, five, fifteen, or twenty years, since that will be left up to the council. I would also like to add my comments. Um, this is the twenty-third year that I've been living at our residence in Southeast Waverly. We've always considered it to be a historic neighborhood, which is why we chose to live there. Uh, we do not, or hope that we do not have to live with a thoroughfare through that neighborhood. We think it would spoil the quality of life there. We still have one young child, uh, and there are many young children around us, and we are three houses away from Third Street. And, uh, we're just concerned that that, uh, will really change the reason why we bought there in the first place. Thank you.
My name is Penny Pierre, and I live at two-two-two Fourth Avenue Southeast. It's the big yellow house right by the Green Bridge. This has been a, a difficult decision for my husband and I to come to some kind of conclusion about what we would like to see. And we, we don't have a, a specific vote from our household, but we do believe that our friends to the south should not be cut off, and the children should not be cut off from southeast, and, and we do need, um, a, a method for our, our children to be able to walk to, to school in southeast. We are open to many possibilities, but our biggest concern is that, um, if the bridge is replaced, that, um, the speed issues through that neighborhood would cause great distress for, for children in the neighborhood. And we would like to see if that is the decision that the council makes, to replace the Green Bridge with a, a two-lane bridge, that stop signs be implemented in there to slow down the traffic. And also, if you've ever driven down Third Street, if there is a car on either side, parked on either side of the street, it is effectively a one-car lane road. And so, in order to, um, control traffic, you, you would have to do some, some mitigation, some stop signs in there. We'd also like to see a weight limit, um, if a, a replacement is, is what is the pleasure of the council. And then also, in terms of the aesthetics of the bridge, uh, we moved to southeast because of the historic nature. We chose to stay in our house after a total repair after the floods of two thousand and eight, because we were in love with the historic district, and, and we chose to stay instead of move. And so we would like to see if a new bridge is the, is the pleasure of the council. We would like to see something that, uh, pays homage to the aesthetics of that neighborhood, um, and blends in nicely, um, so that it is not, um, uh, so it, it, it remains the charm and the character of the neighborhood. But our biggest concern is the speed with which cars went through there before the Green Bridge was closed. And, um, real issues with, if it is made into a two-lane, um, some, some mitigations will have to be done for speed, traffic, all of that kind of thing. So, um, I appreciate you giving this matter your attention. I know it's not an easy decision, and there are many opinions all over Southeast Waverly, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Penny.
Randy Sines, Harlington Place, Southeast Waverly, Iowa. Have quite a few different concerns on this issue. One is the safety issue in the town for fire, ambulance, police. Currently, you have two bridges active in town. One of those bridges go down, response time goes up. That's a big concern for a city. Ten minutes can be life and death. The other issue, I guess, is I have twenty-two years' experience in engineering, surveying, design, and ten years as a project manager, heavy highway construction. You gentlemen had a hard time with a change order approving it for a very nil amount. You, uh, tear into this old bridge, your change orders aren't going to be sixty-nine thousand dollars, they're going to be five hundred thousand dollars. The city of Waverly cannot afford that. I have a three-quarter-ton crew cab diesel pickup. I cannot legally drive across the Green Bridge with a standard pickup anymore. It's time the city bites a bullet and builds a new bridge, let alone raising the structure, which will help improve the flooding issue we have down in our area down there. We're in the low point, and, uh, even in two thousand and twelve, when the Hesco barriers were put up, it broke through that, uh, rushed right towards our house, and came within two inches of going in my basement. You've redone the dry-run trick. The flow, I have not calculated it out yet, I can, has probably doubled to the outlet to the river. That outlet's right above our houses.
I know.
Um, it's a major concern. So I really think you need to get a new two-lane bridge in that people can use, we can have it for safety for the town of Waverly, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Freeman, one oh six Maple Circle. I live about afar, as far away to the west of the Green Bridge as you can, can get and still be in, in southwest Waverly. I have a little different take on this whole thing. First off, I have nothing personal to gain from your decision, other than to help pay for it. My only reason for appearing tonight is that one important consideration has perhaps been overlooked, or at least not been discussed in open meetings, that I can recall. Our family has lived in Waverly since the fall of nineteen hundred and sixty. I remember the flood of nineteen sixty-one, and witnessed each of the subsequent floods to hit Waverly since. There's no reason to assume that the Caesar, Cedar River will flood any less frequently in the foreseeable future. After all, cities and towns will continue to pour more concrete and asphalt, and install more storm drains to carry the water to the river, and the agricultural interests upstream will install more drainage tile to dry their fields. Since the last flood, Waverly has installed a rubber dam, and is currently working on the dry run. These improvements will undoubtedly help northwest Waverly avoid the destructive, uh, factors that, uh, occurred with the previous floods. However, as we have been told, it will do nothing to help southeast Waverly. Perhaps we can get Donald Trump to build a wall on either side of the river, south of Bremer Avenue, uh, only a, perhaps a, a mile and a half downstream.
And get James Field to pay for it.
But maybe that isn't too likely.
Just as likely.
Last week, my wife and I drove around southeast Waverly, north of the river, and counted eight empty lots that once were occupied by homes, plus the removal of Saint Mary's Catholic Church and the VFW. Then we drove to the south side of the river, and counted empty lots south of the Green Bridge, from First Street southwest, east to the soccer field. We counted sev- seventeen empty lots where houses once stood. According to my count, there are currently forty-seven homes, five apartment houses that are left on the south side of that flood-prone area, plus southeast elementary school. How many more floods will it take before that area is turned into little more than green space? I think that if I was making a decision on moving forward tonight, I would opt to go the twenty-year major repair on the existing bridge. That would probably be the quickest fix, and would accommodate the families living in the flood-prone area for several more decades. I would also suggest moving ahead as quickly as feasible on completing the Cedar River Parkway project, east across the river to the east side of Waverly. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Don.
I live on Cedar River Drive. And the last time you met, I was taken about how familiar all of this is. Because thirteen years ago, there was a city council sitting in those seats that was faced with the same kind of a dilemma. And what they did was, they decided to appoint a task force to take a look at the question of the Green Bridge. of the Green Bridge. Let me tell you the people that were on that task force. Kim Bixler, Joe Corson, Melissa Cousin, Mark Hannawalt, Pete Lampy, Ted Lansky, Gene Keller, Kate Coe, Steve Main, Phyllis Rolfs, Mike Zaberski, Dean Soash, Brent Steer, and John Wertz. Each council member named two people. It turned out that of those 14 people, five of them had their residence in the southeast area, and two of them had their primary business. And what they did is, they decided that they would try to do what was going to be in the long-term good for the city. I picked up the notes from the presentation that we made when the report of that group came forth, and I want to share a bit of that with you so you get the flavor of it. In January, February of 2003, the Green Bridge Task Force members were appointed by city council and the mayor, with instruction to study alternatives and bring a recommendation to the city council at its March 24 meeting. There were no restrictions as to the scope of the work. The task force was instructed to consider all of the options and quote, "recommend to the council its best thinking regarding the Green Bridge for what is best for Waverly", close quote. I will tell you that those people subordinated their personal interest for the greater good of our city. They were scheduled to meet for three two-hour sessions. We ended up adding a fourth session. Attendance was nearly perfect. We had two individuals who had to be absent once during all of those presentations, all of those meetings. Every member added value to the quality and completeness of our study and deliberation of the issues and the opportunities. We agreed we would work to gain a consensus, meaning that every possible idea was encouraged and would have an impact on the end result, although some ideas might not be included in the final recommendation. Meetings of the task force were open to the public for purposes of observing the work in progress. Members of the public were encouraged to submit their suggestions and comments in writing either to the city engineer or to me for distribution to the entire task force. We had consultants from WHKS, Stanley Consultants, the Iowa Department of Transportation, and we had our own capable city staff that was providing information. WHKS and Stanley identified the following issues for investigation: environmental impacts, archaeological, geotechnical, hydraulics, structural types, constructibility, economics, cost and funding. We identified 17 possible options, including those that were proposed at the January 20 meeting of city council. The options sorted into categories of repair, replace, and relocate, titles that are familiar to all of you. At the fourth meeting, this was the extra meeting, the conditions to achieve were voted on, with five emerging as being the most significant. One, that whatever was done, provide a cost-effective solution. Number two, that it maintain a north-south vehicle access. That it maintain a third river crossing for passenger vehicles. Number four, to provide a long-term solution with respect to flood, economic, transportation, noise, and so forth. And five, that it minimize the impacts to residents, including property acquisition or relocation. Three options were reviewed. The repair option was redefined as a repair to last 20 to 30 years, with the bridge remaining at its present elevation. A ballot vote was taken, resulting in the repair and replace options being tied, and the relocate option ranking a distant third and was therefore taken off the table. After discussion of the remaining options, a second ballot vote resulted in the repair option receiving five votes and the replace option receiving nine votes. The Green Bridge Task Force therefore made the recommendation, by consensus, to recommend to city council that the existing bridge at Third Street be replaced. So here we are, 13 years later, and what has changed? Well, the truth is, not much. In my view, your options are to do something or to do nothing. If you vote to do nothing, we can watch the bridge rust away. And if you vote to do something, we can either repair it or replace it. If you vote to repair it, we have the option of a five-year fix or a 20-year fix. If you vote to replace it, we have several options for a new bridge. I respect the obviously deep and genuine concern each of you have shown for the impact this challenge makes on the finances for our city. But once you get beyond do something or do nothing, I beg you, take the long view. Let's keep this in perspective. 13 years ago, a select group of thoughtful, concerned citizens appointed to a task force, took the high road and made the recommendation to replace the bridge. The 2003 city council decided to repair it and passed the problem off to the next generation of city leaders. And they knew, they knew they were working with an 86-year-old bridge built in 1917 with a life expectancy of 70 years. The issues then and the issues now are about the same, except the bridge is now nearly 100 years old and the cost of repairing or replacing it have changed dramatically. So, are you going to meet the challenge, or are you going to pass it off to our children or grandchildren to deal with?
Thank you. Any last comments?
I was asked to, by the Historic Preservation Commission, to read Don Meyer's letter since he couldn't be here, whenever people are done with that, so.
Mary, you're doing what?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one thing. My husband asked me to be sure and mention at the meeting that residents on Third Street Southeast have to back out of our driveways onto the street, and that should be a consideration also. And thank you.
That was a good comment. Thank you, Mary. I think we've all received, it's reiteration, correct?
Yeah, they wanted it read out loud for the public to hear, Don's.
Okay. No, go ahead.
It says, "Dear city council members, on behalf of the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission, I am writing to reiterate the commission's position on the Green Bridge issue, which was shared with city council a couple months ago. Our position is that repairing the bridge and returning it to a functional bridge using any of the options that preserve the historical character and integrity of the bridge most clearly aligns with the HPC goals. While we know not all in the community share this view, our commission views the Green Bridge as an icon in the community, having served Waverly for nearly 100 years, and therefore, we would like to see it preserved in some fashion or another. Our Historic Preservation Commission continues to explore the documentation and nomination of the Green Bridge to the National Register of Historic Places. We applaud the city council for seeking input from the community regarding the future of the Green Bridge. Sincerely, Don Meyer, Chair, Waverly Historic Preservation Commission."
Thank you, Wes. Let's, I'd like to ask, I think it's time for us to start to deliberate, but I'd like, we have to remove from the table Resolution 16-08, and then I would like to give a suggested process. Is there a motion to remove from the table Resolution 16-08?
I'll move to remove from the table Resolution 16-08.
A second, please.
Second.
Motion second. And all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, remove from the table. What I'd like to do in terms of process, first, I'd like to ask a hand vote on doing something versus nothing, but before we do that, if anybody would want to make some comments to maybe explain your vote, if you need to, we may do so. If there are four votes for doing something, secondly, I will ask for a hand vote on doing a pedestrian-only bridge or a vehicular bridge. And again, I'll allow anybody who'd like to explain their vote or say anything. Otherwise, we'll just go right to it, but you may make some comments if you'd like ahead of time. Thirdly, if there are at least four votes for a vehicular bridge, I will ask for a repair versus replace vote. And fourth, I will ask for a discussion of the repair and replace options, depending on the choices that we have made. And finally, I'll ask for a formal motion coinciding with the motion in tonight's council material as soon as there is a decision in sight. Any objections to that?
I guess I just kind of lost track of what you're, so basically, what you're proposing is, instead of the resolution, to follow the procedure that you're saying, basically, vote, kind of going through the.
Go through the, yeah, and that's what, I think Dan was saying that, too. I think it's a more helpful process, but we need to move to a motion eventually after we get toward the end, and that will be a roll call vote.
And the resolution will still remain the same? I think you're just trying to guide our movement toward that, is that correct?
Correct.
My only, and we can probably get to this if we're still, if it's still Monday and not Tuesday or Wednesday by the time we get through. My only, I agree with that, I think that's good, just for a discussion. I wonder, once we get to that point, trying to decide if we decide if we're going to fix it, trying to narrow it down to a fix, or if we decide to replace it, trying to narrow it down to replace tonight, I wonder if that's feasible?
If.
That would be my only question.
Let's give it a try.
Maybe that's a further, further meeting or something. I don't know how we handle that. I guess that'd be my only.
But my hope is that we can, David, is that we can, we've been at this forever. I mean, it's either 5:15 or 20 if we repair, and let's nail it down, we can move on with our lives. I think that before we go into this, I do want to thank the public for their input. We've asked for a year-long input into it. Tonight was just marvelous on all sides. And I think a parliamentary question might be coming here?
It's a matter of clarification.
Okay.
I've heard it represented tonight that this is an historical bridge, and I've also heard tonight that the Historical Commission is pursuing having it named an historical bridge. That's a huge difference.
Yeah.
I guess the commission was, has been told that it's pretty much a slam dunk that it would be, they just have to file the paperwork.
But at this time.
The neighborhood is historic. The neighborhood is in the historic, national historic register.
Just looking for clarification.
Yeah, the bridge itself currently is not, but they have been told that it would easily qualify if they would send in.
Yeah.
It would make a difference as to what you might be allowed to do if it has, if the bridge has an historical designation, it may limit the choices that you have as to what you can do.
It also creates funding opportunities. If it is a historic bridge, then it prevents.
I'm not arguing for or against it. For clarification.
That's why they were looking into it, for funding options.
Okay, away we go. First, the hand vote will be, one other question, do you want your vote recorded by name? You put up your hand, do you want the city clerk to record, or do you just want to go by number?
I would, in my opinion, I like what you've outlined, Mayor, but in my opinion, that's all just part of the discussion in a way, to move us along in the discussion to the final resolution. I don't see it as formal action of any kind, and so, I don't see a need to record any of that myself.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be, maybe that's what he was referring to, would there be time for discussion?
Yes, no, I'll do, in fact, before each one. Okay. So, the vote is going to be over doing something or doing nothing, and before we vote, any comments by the council?
I think we should do something if we're voting, we should do nothing or do something.
This is the easy one, guys.
Oh, boy. Thank you for cutting the tension. And it's so nice to see everyone come out for the golf commission. I really appreciate your efforts here tonight. All in favor of doing something, raise your hand. Thank you. Secondly, we're going to have a hand vote on doing a pedestrian-only bridge or a vehicular That's, any discussions? I know we've found like we've discussed this forever, and we may have, but there might be something more we want to say on this.
Just for clarification, a vehicle bridge would include a pedestrian crossing also?
Correct.
I'll just comment on it so people know where I'm coming from. I know there have been, I've heard from people who want only a pedestrian bridge. I've also heard other things as well. Heard about everything, which is great. I guess in my deliberations on this and thinking about it, I think, not only from those people from whom I've heard, do the vast majority prefer a vehicular crossing as well as a pedestrian one, but when I try to think about it in terms of city growth, in terms of access to downtown, access to the school, et cetera, I personally favor one that would be vehicular and pedestrian.
Both.
Yes.
Again, reason for asking my question, I've been contacted by a few indicating that they didn't feel putting a vehicle crossing there was appropriate because they didn't want people walking on the roadway. And when I explained to them, though, that my understanding is, we're separating those and there would be a distinct pedestrian crossing as well as this distinct vehicle crossing, they were a little more comfortable, I guess. I just want to make sure we clarify that. We're talking two separate walkways or two separate segregated surfaces and that type of thing, is my understanding.
And I would want to ask, Mr. Mayor, if we say that we favor a vehicular crossing, are we allowing for either a one-way or two-way?
Yes.
Those are both options.
Yes, it's, right. All we do is rule out pedestrian only.
I guess, just as we're, just kind of go step by step, you know, there has been comments both ways, and I would vote for pedestrian or vehicle traffic, including pedestrian. Just a little bit of my concern, I think if, you know, future planning down the road, if we decide we're going to designate a certain road to change the use of that road, I would like to go that path and proactively change the use of that road. But in this situation, where a road was actually closed without notice, I feel obligation to the people that live there that we can't just close the road. It'd be like if there was a manhole out in front of my house and then it's like, ooh, it's closed, maybe we can stop fixing that. I guess I don't want to start that precedent. So, I think down the road, maybe if we want to turn it into a pedestrian only, you know, I would encourage that discussion, but now I think it's a little different situation. I think our hands are tied, personally.
Yeah, but I guess kind of echo that. I'm not sure that our hands are tied fully on that, in the sense that we couldn't decide to just make it pedestrian, but I think our hands are tied more in fact that we only have the two crossings right now, and we don't have another vehicular crossing that, you know, 15, 20 years from now, if there's a Cedar River Parkway Bridge going across, then there's another vehicular crossing, you know, in town that does that. My kind of thought is, you know, I'm one that is looking at the historical nature of. My, my kind of thought is, you know, I'm, I'm one that is looking at the historical nature of the bridge, and I just, you know, one thing about history is, once you tear something down or remove it, it's gone. It's, it's, there is no more of it. You can't go back. And I guess, long-term, I'm, I'm with Dave on that. I think maybe long-term, if this structure is going to stay in Waverly, it would need to be a pedestrian only just to maintain that in that sense. But we're not at that point right now where we can make it pedestrian only because we need another crossing for just another outlet at this point.
And I, I guess I would add to that. I mean, I, I've really come to think that we probably ultimately need three. And that even two isn't enough, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we're going to turn this into pedestrian without having something else. I think we need to, need to move with this with, for vehicular for now and have another crossing somewhere and then be able to transition this maybe in the future with, that's kind of the way I'm going with this.
I wonder for a point of clarification from whoever is wise enough to answer this. It might be over at the, at the engineer's table or somewhere else. When we had the, the bridge open as a functioning one-way span, and if we decided that that was something we wanted to return to, were we, are we permitted to use that span for emergency vehicles or do they have to go somewhere else?
Mike, I think you, I don't think you mean one-way, do you? You mean one lane, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
One-way at a time, yeah. Yes, yeah, one-lane bridge. If police vehicle or a fire vehicle or an ambulance needed to cross, could it cross? Could it have crossed on that vehicle before we closed it or, or did it?
Only the police.
Police. Fire, okay.
Too heavy.
Okay, okay.
I would say where the fire station is. I don't.
There's no advantage to going across a bridge?
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, fire ambulance doesn't make any, yeah, makes no difference.
Okay, are we ready for a hand vote? All in favor of a vehicular crossing at this location, raise your right hand.
Did you mean my right hand?
Yeah.
I didn't think of a second.
Either hand. Thank you. Okay, so we're. Now I'll ask for a vote on whether to repair or replace. And I'd like to invite any comments that you might have before we vote.
Yes, again, I kind of alluded to this at our last meeting, but just what options, what control does the city have over restricting it? So if it's replaced with a new modern bridge that could take semi-traffic, those type of things, can we as a community, a city restrict that in any way or is that set by some other agency?
You cannot do it permanently. You can do it temporarily, and that's traditionally done by counties in the spring during the thaw.
So if we wanted to keep eighteen-wheelers off of it, we can't post that in a permanent restriction and?
As a permanent restriction, no, and it's unlikely that they're going to want to go down there anyway. Because you get down, trying to navigate onto Seventh Avenue and then onto First Street, it's just not.
Similar to my opinion on it, but I, I guess I want to be sensitive to the folks that have raised it as an issue of not wanting large truck traffic in their neighborhood, those type of things that if there'd be a way for us to restrict it by ordinance, that would play into my decision here, I guess.
What is, what is our ability as far as things like stop signs on Third Street?
If, if they're justifying to put them up, but if you're using a speed control, that's not justification. It's been proven by research that actually promotes it because people get fed up having to stop. And so they either don't stop or they speed in between, so when it's warranted for safety concerns, yes, but not as, as an attempt to control speed.
Mike, what about, we've heard, you know, some people mention truck traffic, using that route to go to GMT. I mean, are we seeing that now or maybe, maybe Rich has some information on that as well in terms of just his officers being out around town?
Well, obviously today, semis haven't been able to use the, the bridge.
Well, but I mean before. I mean, well, yeah, it wouldn't be before either. Well, yeah, you're right. So there's no, no precedent. There, there's no past history of it, but what, what would, what would, would that encourage it, I guess? I mean, are you seeing?
I.
I mean, are you seeing trucks for GMT looking for those kinds of routes or? I mean, maybe you don't have any information on it whatsoever because it's, would be totally new.
Well, routes that we know are going to be utilized by trucks, we have wider roads, wider intersections to allow for wider turns. When we detoured traffic off of Fourth Street onto Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue to, to get around the reconstruction, we restricted traffic to one lane and prohibited parking on those streets. That was to accommodate the turning semis. The semis aren't going to want to try to navigate through the southeast part of the community because the, the streets really don't accommodate and facilitate those, those types of vehicles. May you see a ready-mix truck or dump truck, possibly garbage trucks, snowplows, school buses, yes?
I think it opens up for everything Mike said, but, you know, things like furniture delivery trucks, UPS trucks, you know, a lot, larger trucks that would obviously avoid it before because they couldn't legally go across it if it wasn't high enough or weight limits. Any kind of truck could go across it. I would doubt semis would, but they legally could, and we couldn't stop them. But definitely anything that's going to deliver things in town, and like, again, snowplows and our own trucks, you know, ready-mix trucks, cement trucks could all use it, so it's going to definitely increase that for sure, so.
I have one more question for Mike Cherry, and this will sound like it's way off topic, but actually, I don't think it is. Do we know what the, what the health of the Bremer Avenue Bridge is these days? And are we looking at the likelihood of having to do serious repair on it in the near future, do you think?
We will not. The DOT has recently done some repairs. The bridge is sixty-five years old. It was built around nineteen forty-nine, completed in nineteen fifty. So it's sixty-five years old. It's already had a bridge deck overlay. So contrary to them failing like that and being shut down, that's not the case. We do routine maintenance on it. We are looking at that for the Ames Parkway Bridge. If you've been out there, you can see that we've got some concrete spalling off, and we're starting to do some patching, and probably in the next three to five years, we'll want to do a bridge deck overlay. That bridge is about fifty years old. So, you know, I think that with Bremer Avenue, you know, that's probably going to end up being a seventy-five-plus-year-old bridge before they, they do something to it. Ames Parkway, you know, in about fifty, fifty-one years, we do a bridge deck overlay. Probably looking at, you know, another twenty-five-plus years before we have to do significant repairs again or look at possibly replacing it. So these bridges with, a new bridge with property maintenance, you know, truly can have a seventy-five-plus-year lifespan.
Okay, thanks. Well, the reason for my question is we've heard some concerns voiced, both written and in the, in the chamber, about the possibility that if we don't put a new bridge in at Third Street, we may have some risk. We may be at risk for not being able to get emergency vehicles across the river. And what I'm hearing you say is that for the foreseeable future, you don't think that's a risk.
I, I think where, you know, emergency vehicles may more likely be impeded in the near future is, is during major roadwork. I mean, you look at what closing one lane on Bremer Avenue does to traffic during our rush hour. That more than anything can impede emergency response.
Could a major flood cause damage to the Bremer Avenue Bridge?
It hasn't, and we've had major flood.
But as it's aging now, could it?
I, you know, the bridge is built, built high enough. I think it's, you know, it, it was built above the five-hundred-year flood elevation, I believe, so. I don't perceive the risk being any greater than it was in oh eight.
I would assume it'd be better because the inflatable dam is there now, right? It'd make it a whole lot better. I might be making this up, you can correct my facts, but the water would be at least eighteen inches shallower in the worst case.
Below the dam, no.
What's that?
Not below the dam.
Below the, the, the bridge height.
Yeah, but not below the dam. If it was above the dam, it would.
Okay, yeah.
The trail bridge, yes. The water is several feet lower than it was before. Not on the Bremer Avenue Bridge or the Third Street Bridge for that matter.
You mentioned that Bremer Avenue's had a complete overlay done on it. If we had to do that in today's cost, can you estimate what that would cost?
Bremer Avenue?
Or just?
Well, it's not our bridge.
What would it cost to do an overlay on a two-lane concrete bridge?
On the Ames Parkway Bridge, we're proposing about a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget.
So that would be something that in thirty, forty years, if we did build a new bridge?
Oh, I think it might be fifty years or more like the Ames Parkway Bridge.
Bremer Avenue was sooner, but Adams Parkway is about?
Bremer Avenue had fifteen thousand vehicles a day, and semis.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, okay. I just want, I mean, curious as to, because that would lead to, obviously, like some people have mentioned, there is going to be upkeep that needs to be done. So that's something to factor in.
Could anybody describe for us a little bit more what the pedestrian part of a replacement bridge would look like in terms of some of the safety questions that have been asked for, you know, crossing? I mean, there will clearly be a pedestrian area, but can you talk a little bit more about what the safety for children crossing alone? Or anyone for that matter, crossing on the pedestrian part of a replacement bridge?
Well, the, the typical design would have at least a ten-foot-wide walkway. That'd be very, very common and customary, and you would end up with a railing system between both the vehicles and the pedestrians and then outside. So that is different than what you have on the Bremer Avenue Bridge. You, you have ten-foot-wide sidewalks on both sides, but you have no real barrier or protection in between the traffic and the vehicles. You, you basically have a twelve-inch-tall steel curb system that functions as the barrier rail.
When you say rail, what does that, what, what is that? What does that look like?
Well, typically, it's going to be a, a concrete wall. It can be shaped a little bit differently, but it's usually curved on the, on the insides of the vehicles. Their tires would, would rub it before the, the panel of the car. And I believe the standard height would be about thirty-two inches tall. Oftentimes, they place an additional railing on top of, of that for pedestrians to get the pedestrian rail up at least thirty-six inches, if not forty-two inches in height.
I think the concerns that were raised, I know that I did, were not for pedestrians on the bridge itself, would be on the approaches. You know, once, once the pedestrians would get off the bridge attempting to cross the street before they got to a controlled crossing.
Yeah, I, I think I heard some comments this evening, though also concerned about being on the bridge, so, yeah, but both are, we'd certainly want them to be safe.
And I guess I'd be interested if, if others on the council might have James just comment a little bit on the document that he put together with some of the cost information and the likelihood of other funding, those type of things. For the public as well as our benefit.
Absolutely. Mike Cherry done a lot of the work on this document, in fact, the majority of it, but I'll certainly talk to it as best I can. As I'd stated earlier, the funding capacity for the city is capable of taking the bridge on in the next fiscal year roughly, depending on what happens. It should not impact it as a lot of the options are similar in size and quantity for dollars. So when you look at the funding, the state bridge funds have been brought up quite a bit. The million dollars the state has basically accounted for, for the bridge, for a replacement bridge. That is not there, of course, for repairs of the bridge. But there were other funding from the region that was, I believe Mike said it was remaining funds from project that had not been allocated, been returned. So there was a possibility of three to six hundred thousand dollars depending on the style of option done, whether it be replacement or you look at the repair, and he'd kind of outlined that in each of these options as to what the probability was. The one stipulation of it was that it had to be a twenty-year long-term fix. So a couple of the repair options for the additional funding, the STP and the TAP funding, it would have to be the twenty-year fix or a new replacement bridge, at least a twenty-year improvement. But that leaves a lot of the other options that were particularly possible. So the fact that they're somewhat competitive, the regional especially, they're a little more likely because it's not as large a group that needs to be looking through it. But the state TAP fund is very competitive, and that's the one that we probably did not have a chance of getting the funding for as the majority that has been already utilized and established by existing programs for a number of years past. It was hard to fathom which program would not get that funding. At the most, in the last couple of years, there'd been maybe eighty to a hundred thousand is all that had been not accumulated by those funds for those four programs from the Northern Iowa Prairie Grass Center to AmeriCorps, et cetera. So there would be possibly some funding there, but it would not be near the capacity that was initially thought. So as he's broken out, a number of the options, you can kind of see them, and I can read through them, each of you'd certainly like, but I know we've kind of discussed them as well. The regional STP money, which is for traffic only. The regional transportation alternative money could be for a pedestrian bridge, but that's already been ruled out. So it would only be really STP and TAP for a vehicular structure. And the only then way the state funding for the bridge funds, a million dollars would come in, would be an actual replacement of that bridge. Because we'd looked at the possibility of Cedar Valley Parkway, would that be a possibility? But not a new bridge can receive that only replacement of a bridge, so that would not be a possible alternative there as there were talk of maybe allocating that money future if it wasn't utilized here. So that's, I guess, a brief, brief breakout of the document. If that's satisfactory, councilman, if that's.
Yep, that's hopeful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know in our, one of our last meetings, you talked about going to the Black Hawk Gaming Commission for funds. I know that they have put some money to help fix the bridge in Black Hawk County. I mean, that's something that we haven't, we've talked about just historical type things, but they have put funds toward a bridge project before in the last year or so.
They do that in Black Hawk County more so than they would in Bremer surrounding counties. I did talk to the Gaming Commission about the smaller grants we were looking at and kind of acquired what, what would it take? And you would have to go through the Bremer County version of that as well, which is a much significantly less dollar amount, more competitive by like around forty municipalities, they said, throughout. So they do tend to focus primarily on the Black Hawk County area in general, and there's not near the funding available for surrounding counties. But it's a good thought. I wish it was more, but they, they just don't tend to allocate it that way.
I have another question about the replacement option, and that is, who can, can someone describe or venture a projection about how many and which houses would have to be removed, if any?
Well, with a replacement, we're looking at zero houses being removed. Will there be a need for construction easements? Absolutely. But under no scenario are we envisioning that there would be a need to acquire and, and displace any, acquiring homes and displace any, any residents.
Guess I'm a little bit confused by that. When individual, individual from WK or WHKS was here talking about, the question was asked, was the cost of the homes included in the construction? He said, no. the question was asked, was the cost of the homes included in the construction? And he said, no, because they did not know the extent of how long the bridge would be, how wide the bridge would be, so they didn't include that in the cost. So, and he said further analysis would have to be done before they knew what houses would be impacted.
Yeah, if I could, if I could comment on that a little bit too, and there seemed to be some, some disagreement on the elevation of a new bridge. And I don't know, can one of you guys put it up on the screen?
And Mike, before, before I get started, I guess I'd just like to make a comment. Couple of weeks ago, you alluded to the fact that I would vote for repair based on solely my personal situation, given my proximity to the bridge. And I, I just want to make, make it known for the record that, you know, I'll accept it, I'll accept the results of this, this, this discussion and whatever's decided here tonight. What I'm acting on is, you know, opinions and, and concerns of Southeast Waverly residents. And I think that's kind of overwhelming for me. But...
Thank you, Dan.
Soon as he gets this up here, I'll be able to... There's been some, there's been some, some, some differences of opinion between you and what Butch K. has expressed as far as the actual elevation of the bridge. Would you, would you agree, Mike, that? Zoom out. The, the current level of bridge is right at nine hundred and seven point six feet. Is that the elevation?
I, I've got documents, but I don't think I have them with me.
I've, I've got, I'm, I'm getting my numbers off the 2001, the 2001 flood report by Stanley Consultants. And they're saying that it's nine hundred and seven point six is the present green bridge level. Nine hundred and eight point seven feet is the Q50 or the fifty-year flood level. Is that correct? Can you concur with that?
I got my stuff. So you said, what now?
Nine hundred and seven point six is the current deck level.
Oh, okay. At, at the, at the approaches, at the road?
Correct.
Okay.
Nine hundred and eight point seven is the Q50 flood level, correct?
Uh, Q50. Bear with me, I do have information. Upstream or downstream of the current bridge?
At the bridge.
Right. You got to ask a question whether that's upstream or downstream, because if you're going to keep the existing bridge, the Q...
I'm talking about the existing bridge, is what.
Right. So the Q50 looks to be at nine oh seven point eightish?
Okay, well, on the, on the 2001, I guess this paragraph that I was reading, it was nine hundred and eight, nine hundred and eight point seven is what they quoted as being at the Q50 level. So any bridge that we build there would have to be three foot above that level, correct?
Well, they have two criteria. They, they talk about three feet over the fifty and/or two feet over the hundred. And that is, what I've asked of WHKS is, is that reflective of the entire bridge? And their response was, not necessarily. And so it is very common that the ends of the bridge are somewhat lower than that. But the primary span and, and the majority of the bulk of the structure would be above that. It relates to how much backwater may be generated.
So I guess I'm just, again, just working out this 2001, and I'm not professing to be a, a civil engineer by any means, but if at nine hundred and eleven feet, and you can, you pull that down a little bit, that's the level, you're saying that at five point eight feet above the current deck level is what you're saying that it should be, than a new bridge would be? I know you made that statement previously, five point eight feet higher than the, than the existing bridge.
I think you said that in the middle, though.
I said that the, the abutments would be at about five and a half feet. And that puts the beams, and, and the depth of the beams that WHKS has indicated would be forty-two inch concrete beams.
Which would be below the...
At the abutment, that puts the hundred-year flood elevation right at the beam. And then going out to the first span, there'd be a two-foot rise to get you to that, uh, two-foot elevation above the hundred-year.
So you're just saying the center of the roadway would be, the center of the bridge would be at the five point eight, or the abutments?
The, the abutments would, would be about five and a half feet higher than they are today.
Okay. But then you figure your forty-three inches of beam and a ten-foot deck on top of that, that would be below the Q, Q50 plus three foot?
No, it'd be, it'd be over.
The Q50 plus three foot is nine eleven point seven, and you're proposing that, that the deck height be at nine thirteen point one. That leaves you one point four feet of actual bridge thickness.
Okay, so this document is from October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. This shows Third Street, Third Street Southeast Bridge. This is showing the bridge location. And upstream of the bridge, it's showing that the bridge is an obstruction and it's creating backwater.
Mm-hmm.
Building, building a new structure, we're not, no longer creating backwater. So the fifty-year flood elevation with the new structure would be down around nine oh seven point three?
Without the obstruction, so that means that the, the Q50 would go down?
Yes.
Okay.
Along with the hundred, it drops.
Along with the hundred-year flood level.
Yep.
Okay.
So if we're at nine oh seven point one, or point three, and, you know, we add five point two feet...
Mike, can you take that out a little bit? This is like not helpful.
There we go. So, um, okay, help me out here, keep track of the numbers. Nine oh seven point three.
Take it out for us to see the numbers, Mike, sorry. Yeah.
You can see them right off to the side.
Yeah, okay, got it.
So nine oh seven point three, and then we're going to add fifty inches to get to the top of the deck. Let's just say four point two feet. So that is four eleven point five? All right?
Nine eleven point five.
Thank you. Nine eleven point five. I'll forget you're, uh, uh, ten feet up to the deck, so. We'll, we'll make sure we correct ourselves as we go along. So nine eleven point five. You were indicating that...
The nine eleven point seven is a Q50. What I figured was a Q50, not taking into consideration that would go down.
Okay, now I'm going to add another foot to get us up to the hundred-year. Okay? Because we want the bottom of the beams to clear the hundred-year. And the difference between the fifty-year and the hundred-year is a foot. So now we're up to nine twelve point five for the bridge deck.
So is this making the bridge any, any longer, or is that keeping it the same width?
The, the same length.
Same length. Because I know that, you know, in Casey Faber's comments, what was it, the eighteenth? He said they didn't know how wide it was going to be, didn't know how long it was going to be. They didn't know if there would be any DNR considerations on whether or not...
Right.
They needed to open up that because of the eddy factor that goes on in that area?
And, and that's why I'm being very careful to say approximate, because that level of engineering has not yet been done. It's more money. If it's not an option, then let's not waste the money on it, okay? So we said nine twelve and a half is the bridge deck elevation at the approach to clear the one hundred-year flood. So based on your calculation, that's five point one feet. Based on mine, it's five and a half feet.
Can't see you.
Sorry.
So I, I just have a question on, so what you're showing would mean that if we did build a new bridge, the bridge itself, hundred-year flood would all flow underneath the bridge. But every flood that I've lived here for, when the green, when it floods around the Green Bridge, the Green Bridge itself, I mean, in two thousand and eight, the deck was underwater, but other floods, it goes around the approaches. And so all of the approaches and the homes and the roads going to the bridge are what gets flooded, but the actual bridge itself stays dry. So if we raise the bridge five and a half to six feet, and then build these retaining wall, big triangles going up to the bridge, what happens to the water when it tries to go around it and hits these giant six-foot retaining walls on each side of the bridge? Because that, that's how, that's how it currently gets around the bridge, is by going around it, not over the decking.
Okay. So this is showing the hundred-year flood elevation to be just over nine oh eight. Say elevation nine oh eight point three. Here's the topographic mapping for the area. So the intersection south of Dan's house is right at about nine oh eight point three. The situation that we have right now is like in May of two thousand and thirteen, the water was up to the, the floor beams and, and the stringers, and so we closed the bridge. That was with about a fifty-year event. This structure would have been open and accessible to the neighborhood. A, a new structure would be. So even during, given the elevations here, even during a hundred-year flood, yes, the water would come around, and at these intersection locations, it's going to be, you know, maybe six to eight inches at the most.
Well, the bridge would still have to be closed because the streets going to it will be underwater by six inches to a feet or whatever, at a hundred-year flood.
That's possible.
So I'm, that's, so that's one case I want to point out is that, so if we build this new fancy, not really fancy, it's a plain concrete bridge, but the bridge will be dry, but the streets around it are still going to be flooded, and you won't be able to use the bridge because the streets to it will be underwater. But then are we creating a false dam on each side by, because even on a low flood that wouldn't go over the Green Bridge today, it would go around it because it shows here nine oh seven or whatever it is. So it does go around the bridge and not over the decking, but we're going to raise those streets up six feet and have this huge triangular ramp up. What's going to happen to all that water that hits that? Is it just going to flow around further and hit the, you know, make it worse for that intersection in these homes in that area when it goes around the ramp of the approaches going up to the bridge or? Because it's not going to be able to flow over, you know, the nine oh seven point six you have right there. From that point forward, it's going to be that elevation to six feet higher to get to the bridge. So water's going to have to go around all of that, that hole and back up around the intersection. So I, I would think it's going to make it worse and maybe push water to where we don't have it today.
What you're describing is the situation we have today, where the bridge dams the water and backs it up. And the current bridge is, um, it extends below the deck surface of eighteen to twenty inches. And we had over two feet of water on, on top of it in two thousand and eight. So we had, you know, in the neighborhood of three and a half feet of water in the middle to, the ends are fifteen inches lower, so we had four and a half feet of water pushing on it all across the bridge.
Right, but in the nineties, the bridge itself never got underwater, but all the approaches around it did.
In ninety-nine?
Ninety-three.
In ninety-three, yeah. It was closed because the water was up into the floor beams and stringers, and...
Because the roads to it were underwater though, too, is what I'm saying. And I don't see how that, I don't see how building a new bridge is going to change the water going over the approach roads to the bridge. They're still below the flood level, the roads on that whole area getting to that area.
Well, in, in this situation, the water on the upstream side is a, is a foot higher, and so, yes, it is wanting to push out and around. So you're seeing hundred-year flood elevations of nine oh nine on the upstream side, so that's going to go out and around. And, yes, that's going to be, you know, more than a foot higher than the existing road system. With the new bridge, we think we're going to eliminate that backwater and actually drop that elevation by a foot, upwards of a foot. So even going around the bridge, the water would be nine to twelve inches lower than at the situation we have today because it's able to flow underneath unobstructed.
That's still higher than the road, I guess, is what I'm getting at. The road will still be underwater.
The road, the road would be. I, I'm just worried about the approaches creating a dam that would back up.
There's two points, so, yeah. You won't be able to get to the bridge because it's underwater. But then the approaches themselves are going to create a dam that's going to push it around more into the neighborhoods more and hit more houses, is what I...
You know, you said that there's no, you know, there's no plan right now. I know Casey Faber also said in the eighteenth that, that, you know, property acquisition. I did, did do some research on Beacon. I know there's, in the four houses that are closest to the bridge, it's probably, it's five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars assessed value. And if there would be any property acquisitions that need to be done, that would have to be considered as an addition to the cost.
But Mike just said there wouldn't be any, so, I mean, you know...
That's why I wondered, because in the presentation with WHKS, they said that they hadn't calculated that into it.
They, they weren't sure on width or they weren't sure on length.
Wasn't the twenty percent that they wrote in, didn't have anything to do with the...
I mean, I can play it back if you want.
No, no, no.
It was clear that, that there did not include any property acquisition.
Because, because I was curious, I was confused, because I thought I remembered it, so I went back actually today and listened to it.
I thought I remembered it did, and maybe it's a private conversation, but it doesn't appear, my, Bill was saying, no, no.
I don't think, I don't think he had anything in there for property acquisition.
He had a contingency in there of twenty percent.
That's just overrun for the construction, though.
Well, no, I think, at least the way I understood it was it could be used for any contingency, including property acquisition.
That's what I understood. In fact, I asked it, might, might have been privately then.
I mean, well, not, not, yeah, I mean...
Property acquisition would be way more than twenty.
Well, yes, it would be, but for any kind of easements or anything else, it would be, would be necessary. But I, I think what we're, I mean, can anybody clarify the difference between what Mike is saying about, I mean, you said that with quite some confidence, Mike, about that there would not have to be any houses that would be taken out? And how does that align with what Casey was saying?
I guess from, unless the, the bridge design had changed, because the numbers haven't changed, and what he presented to us is the same numbers. So if the bridge design changed, then I would assume the numbers would have changed.
We just need help understanding it, I think.
Well, I think he's being cautious and I'm going out on a limb. But I, you know, have looked at it. I've asked some questions, I've asked them for, do some profiling off the ends of the bridge to find out how far it takes to transition down five and a half feet. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, Dan, that we thought that the roadway out in front of your driveway would be in the neighborhood of eighteen inches higher than it is today.
Based on your, your figures, right?
Yeah, I like your figures better than mine, so hopefully that's, that's the direction we'd go.
But it is a good question, Dan. If you felt that this, if they did pass, if we did pass tonight for replacement and you felt, your question is, would there be money if you wanted to be bought out?
I don't even want to go down that road, I just.
Okay, I thought that's what.
No, not at all, and that's not.
I'm just helping you out.
Yeah, I would dovetail, because I mean, there's going to be three to four homes affected by the approaches, and it's going to go from having zero elevation in front of their house to as much as five and a half, six feet, depending on where we end up, eight feet, we don't really know. But what if someone decides they don't want to stare at in six foot high retaining wall in front of their house? Does the city just say shove it or do we buy their property? I mean, because their entire landscape or their yard is completely going to change and their entire outlook on, you know, they might look out their side window and be able to see over the road and into the river and the Green Bridge, and now they're going to look out onto a brick retaining wall.
Or stone.
Yeah, but that, I don't know if that, that hasn't been planned or figured into the cost either. I mean, what kind of stone, and if we want fancier stone, it's going to cost more. But do we just tell people to live with that or do we have to buy their property because we've totally changed their entire neighborhood with this?
Can you give a, can you give us an idea of how many homes would be significantly affected in terms of their sightline, Mike?
It's going to be more, I mean, even ones, because I have family who lives on Fourth Street on the, it's the north side. You stand on their front door, you just look right over the Green Bridge and you can see the river. They won't be able to see the river now because there'll be an angled road blocking the entire view. That's even a block away, so.
I guess I just got a point of com, or point of process. So we, we hired a local engineer that has significant experience in bridge design, proven experience in bridge design, found that he wasn't DOT certified. So we had, we brought WHKS back because they were DOT certified for this bridge. And now we're questioning what they gave us in the January eighteenth report. So it's not intuitive to me that we're questioning that person, but.
I think it's just more information. It isn't all, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to gather more information and they're not here right now, so.
But if we didn't, if we didn't trust the local engineer, then out of fairness, I think we should trust WHKS.
I would just like an answer to my question that I asked.
Sure, yeah, I'm not limiting obviously that, but.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so this is the south end of the bridge. The end of the bridge is right here. And when we talk about Mr. Lampy's driveway, it's over here. So this is garage. This house is no longer there, this one's no longer there. So we talk about it being about eighteen inches higher than the existing roadway at that point. So Dan, does that affect your sightlines?
The eighteen inches?
Well, the, you know, we talk about going from.
It wouldn't affect mine, I think he's talking about somebody on the other side.
Because your, your garage is in the northeast corner.
If it is truly eighteen inches, no, it would not.
I would say though, if I lived in Dan's house, I'm not.
And then there's no house on the southeast corner. We go up to the north. This house is gone. This is a garage.
Now, the eighteen inches wouldn't at my driveway, but at the, you know, abutment of the bridge.
Six foot at the bridge, you won't be able to see over that from any of these homes. Even the one, like if you go up, the one across the street, you know, by nine oh nine point two, there's houses going backwards.
Dan, does your house face the bridge? Or does your house more or less face to the northwest? Your backyard?
The north side of my, I've got a big window on, on, on the north side of my house that I can see pretty much the entire bridge. So as far as facing, like I said, I'm, we're confused by what you're getting at.
Maybe, maybe I, I want to take a little bit of heat off of Dan. Let's make it my house. If, if my house, if my house was there, I wouldn't want eighteen inches in front of my driveway. How I'd get out of my driveway.
I understand, that's why I said last week that I.
I wouldn't want six feet at the bridge either, because then even if I'm in my backyard, I can't see over the river anymore. I mean, it just blocks, it's a huge wall in front of your house, on, and both sides of the bridge.
It would change, it would definitely change the look, the look of the, from any, any house around there, not just mine.
The house west, the house east, west of it, I mean, they're not going to see over.
That does have a view, probably is this one here in the northeast corner. Because their garage is on the backside. So, you know, they're the ones that are most going to be impacted by the wall.
What about even all these places to the east though? I mean, they're all the same way, they're, you raise the wall six foot high and I just, to me, it just doesn't seem right or feasible. Changes the entire look of the, of the entire neighborhood.
So this illustrates, this is where the existing bridge deck is, this red line. This is where the new bridge deck would be. Below that are the beams, above that are the barrier rails. So this is a pretty good approximation as to the impact of the new bridge.
That's assuming you're not blocked by the walls going up toe to the bridge though. You might not even have this view if you were farther back.
The, the existing, whilst the existing bridge structure is, is like twenty-two feet tall from top to bottom. And we're talking about from the bottom of the concrete beam to the top of the barrier rail being in the neighborhood of seven and a half to eight feet.
I'm saying people enjoy looking out their window and seeing this as opposed to a concrete wall or a concrete beam. That's why it's historic, that's why they live there, that's what they all said, so that's what.
Oh, you can see through the green.
You can see through the bridge, you can, you can't see through a wall, I mean, unless you're Superman. He led light in the wall, then he's screwed because he can't see the lead, you know, it's all the problems.
So when you reference wall, I believe this is like what you're indicating here.
I would not want that as my front yard, personally. Maybe somebody here would, but I wouldn't want that as my front.
Well, would that be in anybody's front yard? I'm still having trouble visualizing the, the approach.
It'd be Lampy's front yard, it would be the house across the street on the north side's front yard, that red line there on the other side.
Okay. These are the approximate locations of where the, the retaining walled section would be. And we're going from, you know, like five and a half feet at the bridge down to about eighteen inches by the time you get to here. Same thing on the north side.
Yep.
All right, that's helpful, thanks.
Is our plan to take the sidewalks up the elevation as well then too? Because they'll have to to get to the bridge to go over the bridge, right?
They'll, they'll match the same elevation as the bridge deck.
So the, the, if, if we do this, the ramp up of the roads will have the sidewalks also ramping up on each side to get to the bridge, to go over the bridge deck.
I believe what's being proposed is only have sidewalk on one side and to make it ten feet wide.
To me, I guess I go back again to if we spend all this money on a new bridge and the roads to it are still going to be underwater when it floods, what good is it to have a dry bridge that you can't get to?
I think as, as I look through this, I guess I've made comments throughout and I, and my comments stay the same. First, first my comments go to the people, you know, then the comment was made, taking the high road. To me, listening to the people is taking the high road. We had some people that did some really hard work this weekend, and quite frankly, they did it out of desperation because they're trying to save their neighborhood. You know, there's, there's some folks are saying that, you know, take it down, replace it, and I, and I respect their opinion, but I, I see that more financially oriented, where the people that are doing the petitioning are trying to save their neighborhood, they're caring for their children, seeing tears in their eyes when they come up and talk about it. And to me, that's important, that's taking the high road is to listen to that. We had a, a young lady, Megan Burrow, that did a, she put some hard work into setting up a petition site. And we got over twelve hundred names on that petition site, of which six hundred of those were directly from Waverly. Around eight hundred or so were from the surrounding Bremer Butler, Black Hawk County, but six hundred of those were directly from Waverly. We had a Facebook page, and that, I believe she started that one as well maybe, and there's two thousand likes. So we're using lots of different media in our modern world to get input, and it was very impartial. People could, people could actually go on this petition and say, I don't want a new bridge, and they did. There's people that wrote comments, I was able to take those out so I can get an accurate number. So, and also I guess as we go back, I look at it from cost, priority, flood prevention and history. First, cost, we're looking at, if we replace the bridges, it's not one point five seven million dollars. The cost is over three million dollars to the taxpayers. The taxpayers will pay three million dollars. The rest of that one point five seven million dollars is not free. The taxpayers will pay three point one seven million dollars. The cost to Waverly, the million dollars I understand is relatively known, the rest of it is not, so it's a gamble. The price of the houses is a gamble. So as we talk about cost, we've got a lot of open area in the new bridge. And I see cost is actually to that neighborhood. To me, I would, I would speculate if we would build a new bridge, the cost to that neighborhood would be more than if we would replace it. The, you know, the, the people are telling me the standard of living would be impacted, their kids' safety would be impacted. I would, you know, people have told me, boy, if you, if you build a new bridge, I think I might move. So, so the cost to that bridge is actually not development or growth, it's actually decline. If, if I can, if the overhead's still there, I want to show you, show you something here. That was the miracle of the internet. That shows, Mike's going to have to teach me how to run this. Run button was up and down, yeah. So if I pull away, so I want to, I guess I want to show a picture. So this is actually nineteen thirty. So if you look at, if you look at that neighborhood down here on the other side of the bridge, it's that area right there. So that's nineteen thirty. So if I go to almost ninety years later, that area on the other side of the bridge is about the same. So nineteen thirty, two thousand sixteen, nineteen thirty, two thousand sixteen. So I guess my point is that neighborhood hasn't changed for only, for over ninety years. And I don't see that as a bad thing, I don't, I don't see that that neighborhood hasn't changed in ninety years. I don't see that as a lack of development. I see that as a solid neighborhood that has kept its heritage and its history. And we're, we're talking about piling a concrete bridge through it and changing that. So if we put a forty lane bridge through that neighborhood, that neighborhood can grow. There's, there's not going to be more houses in that neighborhood, unless I'm wrong, somebody please tell me. But if we put an interstate through that, that neighborhood's not going to grow, it's probably going to decline. The growth in town is in other areas, and that doesn't really open up traffic to go to any place besides where it is today. So it doesn't really improve our situation, it just opens it up. So the, so as I look at priority, I guess, so today, we're, we're right close to our debt limit. And so what I did, and, and I was, had a conversation with James as well, he was trying to do, we're kind of, I think we're kind of going the same direction, but I was trying to basically take all the different projects we've talked about. You know, we, you know, so I'd heard about a couple of new ones, but, you know, everything from Cedar, Cedar River Parkway, Cedar Lane, a couple of the bridges, the pool, Fourth Street, Sixteenth Street. When I add those up, I'm about thirty-eight million dollars of projects, thirty-eight million dollars of projects that are on our docket for the next five years, which is impossible. So then I started taking, I was like, how do we prioritize those so I can make them fit within our debt limit, which is not thirty-eight dollars, thirty-eight million dollars? How do I make them fit within our debt limits? So I found myself trying to prioritize, and it went out to about eight years before I could get them all to fit in. And this is just me trying to figure out, so do I take a pool, do I take Fourth Street? Do I take Sixteenth Street or do I take Cedar Lane? Do I take Cedar River? And I was basically moving these around to try to fit them in, but as I was thinking, Bremer Avenue's got to happen in the next three years, and Cedar River Parkway better happen in the next three years or five years, I guess instead in the paper, we're going to bond before twenty twenty. So I think it's literally impossible to bridge, build a new bridge at the same time. So from a priority standpoint, that's why I was, I was definitely for a fix because that's what we can handle today. That's a win-win, as, as Dan has said, for that neighborhood, because it fits with that neighborhood. And it allows us to be able to fund some of those projects that will actually provide economic benefit and not be a cost. The flood, I guess I don't need to reiterate that, we've talked about, we raised the bridge, it's going to be underwater or the, the approaches will be underwater, so it's, it really kind of negates that. The history part, to me, is, is very important. People say, why are we saving this bridge? To me, I don't know how many people have traveled, traveled or, or wanted to travel to Europe or looked at pictures of Europe, you know, what, what is the nostalgia or what brings us to countries like that is basically the history. We can go there and eat the same food here, I can, you know, I've traveled to Germany, I, I eat the same exact roast beef that my grandmother made, which is kind of comforting to me, and I got a, you know, part of my heritage is German. But the history there is phenomenal. We can't continue to tear down our history, we should save that history, and I think that's okay. So from that standpoint, I'm still, I still favor the fix. So I guess in, kind of in summary, from a cost, it's more than just dollars, and I can, I can make that bridge look affordable just as well as I can make the new one affordable because there's so much that we don't know. We don't know what the houses are going to cost, we don't know if we're going to get those grants on the priority. We've got other projects that would provide a better economic benefit in the near term, near term, and fixing this is what the neighbors want, so. That's some of the comments.
Thank you, Dan. Other comments? James, any comment on, assuming we don't have to, we're working on the pool, let's take that one out. But we can postpone that a while, but do you see a problem on debt load here if we choose to? Seems to me they're somewhat comparable, aren't they?
Well, the twenty year fix and the new bridge has always kind of been the similar dollar amount. Depending on if David's referring to the five or the fifteen or whatever other fix there may be, but the twenty year and the new bridge with the million dollars in state funding is, is similar. All things being as they've been presented now, the unknowns, he said, you know, it's hard to say. But from a funding standpoint, you know, the bridge is not the issue necessarily, it is truly the other options going forward. Now, is it all possible? Of course it is. It's how far out do you want to go, how much can you look at your debt levy? How much can you look at the capacity? And David's correct, we're doing the same thing, right in parallels. Right, stop that. One of us is going to have to do it. I hope it's Dave, because it's not a fun time doing this and trying to get this all fit in, but it's possible. So yes, whatever funding you do, it does impact other projects, but it doesn't make them one or the other. It just makes it a little more complicated. And that's regardless of anything, whether it's the bridge or the Bremer Avenue or the Parkway or the, there is a laundry list and the amount is, yeah, 30-some to 40 million. It's just depending on how long out it goes to get it done. So that's some of the planning we'll have to do going forward as a council when we get to that point. But as far as the bridge, I still go with the discussion point of it can be funded. Whatever needs to be funded, if this is a top priority, then it'll be funded. It's just the best way possible, and we'll know that once you get to the decision of which one it's going to be. So that's my take on it.
Right, so.
I thought I had a, not dinner, I thought I had a really good discussion with James this afternoon. Basically, that, you know, that whole pile of projects is, it's exciting to try to understand what we should do first or what we could do, but that's only what we know of. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things, you know, that, that didn't include any real estate development. You know, that people, people are looking for homes. You know, I tried to put in, I guess, real estate development or commercial development. There was a dollar mountain there.
Industrial Park.
Industrial Park. I tried to put that in, but that was in my total, but 20th Street wasn't in there. I forgot about it. So, so that's my point. We've got a lot of work to do in prioritizing and understanding the projects that we should do. And I think we've taken our eye off the ball for a year in talking about the bridge, where we need to fix it. My preference would be at least 15 years. I was, at first, I was a shorter fix. But a longer fix gives us time to plan, gives us time for the dust to settle, and, and opens that bridge for a longer term. And, you know, and also, you know, people talk about, we're kind of kicking that down to our grandchildren or later generations. I was kind of doing the math, and I'll age myself, but I've got young kids, and my kids will actually be charged with replacing a 75-year bridge. So, and their grandchildren will. So to me, having to do some of these things is just life. Like the gentleman talked about fixing his pickup, you know, I've got tires I got to put on my truck I don't want to have to pay for. But that's, that's what we do. That's why we get paid the big bucks at council. We don't get paid by it, by the way.
Anybody else want to weigh in before?
My, my question, I guess I've got a question from Mike on this in terms of the engineering and the process, you know, depending on which way we were to go on this. But my hypothetical here is if, if we were to go with repair as our, as our choice, and, you know, we're talking about the, all these potential hidden costs with, on a new bridge with the homes and whatnot. There's certainly hidden costs potentially in the repair option, talking about digging into the abutments or digging into the piers and finding out that suddenly it's not a, as the gentleman said earlier, it's not a $60,000 repair. It's a $500,000 change order. What is our, what is the process in terms of the engineering? And if we were to say we want to repair and they start into the engineering and find that the costs are suddenly skyrocketing on us, how will we be able to back out of that and go to a replacement? If we just determine that the repair costs are just going through the roof? Is that a, is that a possibility, or do we start down that road and we have to just do the repair and go with it?
Well, there's always a series of checks along the way, decision-making opportunities. And whether it's repair, replacement, you will certainly have that opportunity going forward. So we're kind of in the big picture concept stage right now. Hopefully, we're supplying you with the information that allows you to make an informed decision on which, which options or option that you want to proceed with. The next stage would then be developing an engineering agreement. And within that, there would probably be at least three different points where we'd be coming back to the council and updating you and saying, do you want to continue proceeding? And that's typically occurs at the point where they have, like, the 30% plans. And then you have your 70% plans and cost estimates. And then you are finalizing the plans and setting the public hearing to proceed forward. Up until you award the project, you know, you can take bids and you don't have to award. But typically, at the point where you award, you are making a commitment to proceed forward. And we get into, let's say, a bridge repair. If we see a significant change in the scope of the work that needs to be done, we're going to be back in front of the council. If there's minor changes, you know, we're going to keep you informed, but, you know, maybe instead of, you know, replacing 50 stringers, you end up having to replace 55 stringers. Does that warrant a major change in the scope of the project? No. But we do that with all our major projects. We provide those updates, and it's a decision-making opportunity for the council to proceed forward or not proceed forward. If it's a rebuild, you know, we get to that 30% plan phase, we will know at that point what the easements and right-of-way needs would be for the project before we proceed any further. So that is the standard format on these large projects to give the council and the public plenty of opportunity to review the projects as they proceed forward towards a bid letting.
Tim, if I could just piggyback on that, do you have a sense, from start to awarding a contract under those two scenarios, which would move faster, or would they both have basically the same timeline?
I think that I had indicated previously that a repair from beginning to completion would proceed quicker, maybe about six months quicker to an opening. It's still, I think I was looking at 18 to 24 months to move through the process on a repair to the point where it's open, and 24 to 30 months on a bridge replacement.
Does it take longer if we do the cement work, too?
I'm, I'm looking at the 20-year repair timeline. And, you know, obviously, the five-year repair didn't involve any concrete work, didn't involve any painting, didn't involve anything other than where considered short-term repairs. So certainly, that'd be the fastest, but it's also got the shortest life expectancy.
Yeah, the five-year go quick without the cement. At that point, we're dealing with comparable costs between 20-year repair and a new bridge.
My, my understanding and my assumption is with a new bridge, there are no piers involved, correct, in the river?
No, we would look at three spans, just like it is today.
There would be piers. Okay, so there's no difference in the way the water flows and the way stuff might accumulate, no matter which way we do this?
Well, during, during flood events, we think the impact is less, and it will allow for the free flow of water under the bridge rather than being caught in the bridge. We get up to a 50-year event and it's into the bridge.
But if you have piers on either construction, why would it be different?
Because the, the bridge beams and the decking are higher, and the water flows freely underneath a new bridge, where it was into the guardrail and over the deck in 99 and 2008. In 93, and again, in, in 2013, it was, it was below the deck but into the, into the deck support system.
So in your opinion, we would be dealing with better flood control mitigation if, if we went with the new bridge?
Well, yeah, I think we're going to see a slight reduction, you know, in the neighborhood of about nine inches or so on the, on the backwater, on the upstream side. You know, I'll go with the extreme here, in 2008, you're going to have water in the neighborhood. It's going to happen. 99, you'd have a little bit of water. You'd still have accessibility if it's a few inches deep. In May of 13, we would have never shut the bridge, never isolated the neighborhood.
And I just want to make sure.
Drivers not to drive on roads that are covered with water, though.
Yes, we'll help them.
So do I correctly understand that if we build a new bridge, the requirement is that it needs to be elevated? Is that fair to say?
Correct.
And if we keep the bridge that we have now, that requirement does not apply?
Correct.
And is that because the design we have is grandfathered in? Is that a fair way to say that?
Yes.
Yeah.
The only way the DOT gives you that million dollars is you have to build a 100-year-old bridge or three feet above 50 or whatever the requirement is, so.
Yeah, okay.
So we could raise the current bridge up, but that would be, I don't think they, I think you have to build a new one. Plus, it has to be flood, the bridge itself, but I still go back to the roads to it are going to be underwater in a flood event, so.
One thing I was going to say is I, you know, I was talking about the adding the $38 million into our budget or whatever. So what I did was actually took the, if you remember the, the report that PFM gave us, basically turned it into an Excel spreadsheet so I could do some scenario analysis. But what I, what I found when I did that was our debt limit is 80%, our self-imposed debt limit is 80%. I did this last year when, when I first came on council, I did it basically so I could kind of understand what PFM was talking about, and it helped me to create the spreadsheet so I could understand the math. So I went back to that to get the start, and that was actually, the debt limit was set at 70%. So somehow, in the last couple of years, our debt limit went from 70% to 80%. James and I talked about it and didn't know why it went from 70% to 80%.
You mean, you mean our self-imposed debt limit was changed by someone? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it was, if you go back to the PFM, it was 70% on that form, and this year it's 80%. And I was just going to ask. As I go back, it was, I don't know if there's any historians in the, so it, just, I guess, what that does to us. So what I did was, so I know it sounds like, so what, what does that do to us? So if, if you go back to 70%, that's basically a $3.6 million hit to our debt capacity. So I also, if you remember, this year, our, our evaluation went up 6.52%, which I thought was unusually high. So if I went back to a four-year average, which gives us kind of the benefit of the doubt, most of the times it was like 1.3 or so. If I took it back to 2.3, that was a one point, almost a $1.2 million hit to our debt capacity. So if we, if we look at a normal year, if we would have had a normal year, we wouldn't be able to fund this at all. So that's a little bit of my concern, is we're kind of talking about funding it based on an unusually high valuation. So if I go back to the 70% plus go back to an average year, it's almost $5 million off of our debt capacity. So to me, I'm, that scares me, as a council person that's responsible for the budget and I've got my name on a vote, that probably for the first time, that scares me.
I, I would agree with you a little bit, but part of the reason why we have that either 80 or 70% is for emergency-type funding that we have that capacity. And I guess, to me, this is one of those situations that would fall into that additional 20% because this isn't a knee, a nicety that is a planned, we're looking at expansion or building out the Parkway or something like that. Those would be projects that we need to plan in and say, how do we keep that under that 80% capacity? This is something that, it happened, it closed, we need to figure out what to do with it. It would be something like the Adams Parkway Bridge having damage to it, that we would have to come up with money for. We've got that, that's why we have that extra 20% built in that we're not exceeding, so we have that. To me, that's, that's where that comes in, so I'm, I'm okay.
But we still have a tsunami of projects coming.
Oh, yeah, we've got to make, we've got to make priorities on those.
Some of them we don't have a choice, though, like the third or the Bremer Avenue. So anyway, that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much we want to, put bricks on Bremer Avenue if we wanted.
So on the, James, on your, when you, when you just told us that, that we can make this work, and you've done some calculations on that, and we can include other projects that Dave's mentioning, not all immediately, obviously. Which debt capacity were you working with?
80%.
Okay.
We talked, all he knew about was 80, and I don't know, somebody can verify that.
Because it kind of made it sound now like.
I know Jenny or do you?
There is a document from a year or two ago that said 70% on it from PFM. I don't know why it was there, what it was. I went off the most recent one that was here, which was 80%. And that's what I've been building everything on was staying under the 80%.
So it's not a matter of using the 20% for this? I mean, that's actually, we're still staying under the.
What I'm saying is that reason that 20, we're keeping that 20% in reserve is something like this. To me, that's why that's there.
And I think Jenny said, too, that if going above it impacts our bond rating, possibly.
Going above what?
80%.
Your legal limit would be a big problem, the 80%, since it's self-imposed. They're really going to look at your trend of debt in general. If it's not being paid down in an expedient fashion, that would be an issue. But the city's is being paid down quickly, what they consider quickly, 10, 12 years. But yeah, if you exceeded that and got clear to your limit, that's a significant problem. So we'll definitely try and stay below the 80 at all cost if possible, so.
Right, and we have the decrease coming on a rapid level. We're dealing with comparable monies, I think, David, either way. If we go with the 20-year particularly on a repair and then.
I think the big thing is we just don't, we don't have any big projects that we can do this year besides this one right now. We don't, some of those, ones that you're talking about, the Forest Street, 20th Street.
20th, Cedar.
Some of those, we don't, we don't have the capacity right now to stay comfortably where we want to stay. But I go back to what you had said before, and I guess I said earlier at this meeting what David said, just kind of looking at, at the costs associated with doing things and from what like Mike said. You know, can we, can we reverse and go back in another direction? Yes, we can, but if we choose the replace option, one of the first options or one of the first steps that's going to happen is they're going to remove the old structure. There, there's no going back from that. You can't, you can't stop and say, no, let's go ahead and put it back. It, it's, it's gone. And I think about, you know, things that are happening around the world where historical structures are being destroyed just because people feel, hey, let's practice blowing stuff up or something. You know, that's, there's things like that, that, that once, once the history is gone, it's gone. It's, you can't put it back. And, you know, if we get into this and it suddenly is doubling the cost on a, on a repair option, we can back off and say, okay, at this point, it's not worth it to continue to repair it because that cost is just getting too out of hand. But if we go to the replace option, it's gone. Yeah, it, it's gone. I mean, you can decide, well, we don't like this look, we're going to go to a different look, but we can't go back. So I guess that's where I'm leaning on the, on this next hand vote.
Which puts us very close to the hand vote.
Well, I, I'd like to, I guess articulate my thoughts a little bit. I think with regard to, you know, Dave's concerns about all the other projects, they're certainly, that's certainly serious, and that is something we're going to have to turn our attention to and as soon as possible, and some of them we already have. But I thought we had, as a council, decided that the Green Bridge, the Third Street Cross. But I thought we had, as a council, decided that the Green Bridge, the Third Street Crossing was a pri- was the priority. And so I'm going to assume that, I guess, that that is the priority. And hearing what, um, uh, James has said about, um, you know, the ability to do it, but that we will have to have perhaps just as hard a decisions afterwards in terms of prioritizing the remaining projects. Um, I guess that's what I'm, I'm expecting. If we, you know, if, if we deal with the bridge first, whether it's repair or replace. As far as the crossing there itself, as I said before, I, I, I don't, in my mind, there's no doubt that that's the right place and that it's a needed place. In addition to, which we haven't talked about, and I know that's for another time, but turning our attention as soon as possible to this, uh, to the, um, uh, parkway crossing as well, or the extension of that and the, the last phases of that in order to, um, cross further east, uh, on the way out of, well, more or less on the way out of town. I had concerns initially about, in replacement, um, uh, questions about safety and impact on the residents. Tonight, those at least have been partially answered for me. I think that, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, in either case, uh, but I'm thinking now in particular of replacement where I had those questions, that those have, you know, that those have been addressed, that, that there is relatively, in my interpretation, relatively little impact on homes and families living in homes there. And that it can be done to ensure the safety of pedestrians and is probably, well, at least as safe with a two-lane replacement as with a single, um, one-lane bridge there. The thing that weighs heaviest on my mind with, um, leaning toward a replacement is the long-term view. We are, you know, the longest repair option we're talking about, the longest, is twenty years. We're thirteen years now after the last task force and we haven't done anything. We would have to start, even with a repair option, we'd have to start next week, once, or the week after we make a decision, planning for the next twenty-year. What's going to happen, what's going to happen then? And yes, our children and, uh, you know, in Waverly, Dave's children, as he mentioned, are going to be paying for either option. It depends how much. And as I see it, if you take the long view, there are our children who, uh, are still at home now and by the time the twenty-year bridge is done, will have paid, uh, or the community will have paid in one way or another about a hundred and five thousand dollars a year for it. And the seventy-five-year option, when they do turn twenty and leave town and go someplace else and the rest of us are still paying for it, will, will be paying about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. So, and I, you know, I, and, and to me, that's the long view. And what gives us time, everybody's, not everybody, but those who favor the shorter view say, well, that gives us time to make another decision. Yeah, but we're going to have to start making those other decisions a lot sooner. Like I say, I think we're going to have to start almost immediately to plan for the next twenty-year repair, replacement option. So I really think that the long-term view, as I'm calling it, um, it, it passes less of a cost onto the next generation of citizens, the next generation of children and grandchildren, if you want to personalize it, the next generations of council. And, uh, I think we understand the cost of a new bridge, this is my impression. We understand the cost of a new bridge better. Yes, there could be change orders and things happening there too. But I think we understand what those might be a lot better than a bridge that we haven't dug into yet and started to repair and where anything, which Casey has also said to us, anything could come up for a whole lot of money. And that's the, I think that's a greater unknown than, uh, the unknowns of a replacement. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Thank you. And you want to, been quiet?
I appreciate the conversation tonight. You can tell that as a council, we put a lot of time and effort into this and again, I understand the character of the neighborhood, I understand that, and I'm, I'm certainly not discounting that. As, as far as Dave's comments about priorities, I, I see that's the role of the council. We did it on the pool. We decided not to bond for the lazy river and those type of things in lieu of other projects. So we're constantly going to have to do that. So again, my view is more the long-term and to me, a two-lane modern bridge is, is a long-term. My sense tonight was that maybe there were some leaning towards a five-year fix, which just puts us in that constant, let's keep talking about the Green Bridge for the next five years because we have to have a plan. If we go with, uh, repair, I certainly hope that the council favors the twenty-year plan versus any of the other two. But I think regardless of what we do, we can address the safety concerns, we can address the traffic flow, we can address the aesthetics. There's been comments about just a plain bridge and I think there's already been comment that, no, we want it to look as it fits in the neighborhood, carries some of the historic look forward. So I would certainly be looking for that as we design it, if we go that direction, so. Knowing that we've got more discussion after we make the next hand vote, I guess I'm in favor of making the next hand vote.
Okay.
I wonder, um, just, I guess, just to kind of finish, I don't want to leave the impression, so I'm definitely for a fix. That's not a short-term view, that's a long-term view. To me, building a bridge, and I tried to articulate that with my pictures, but building a two-lane highway bridge in this neighborhood, to me, it's crazy, um, for what it's going to do to the people there, but also the investment, um, to build, to take that investment, take that priority, take our, take our eyes off of the other projects, the other investments in town. To build a whole entirely new bridge in that area, um, is not a good use of taxpayer funds because it is over a three-million-dollar bridge and there's, there's, you know, he, um, Dan articulated over six-hundred thousand dollars. You know, during the WHKS discussion, someone asked about if we would do decorative brit, uh, or stone. He said, well, that would be an additional cost, and he talked about an architect that maybe could design that, so there's unknowns with that. Basically, what we're showing here is a bridge that you're going to see going across the interstate. If we want anything more, it's going to cost more. So, so I just want to leave that my view is not the short-term, it's the long-term for the people. That's what they told us. We've got six-hundred, two-thousand, we've got, you could say thousands of names and people that boots on the ground trying to save this bridge. I don't see boots on the ground getting petitions to tear down the bridge.
I understand your point, Dave, but I, I do want to say something about the language that's used. I don't think Third Street is an interstate. And, um, I wouldn't imagine that a two-lane bridge would be an overpass over an interstate. I see it as an extension of a two-lane street.
But the, the, what I was saying is just the design-
Wasn't it originally a two-lane?
No, but the design, when they showed us-
When I grew up, it was a two-lane.
For buggies.
No, no, let's not turn this around.
It could still be two-lane if you drive.
The bridge, the bridge design that they showed us included just a stray concrete bridge. No, no.
It would be a very plain Jane, concrete bridge.
Plain Jane, concrete bridge, that was my point.
You know, as far as longevity too-
We all hear different things.
As far as longevity, you, you're looking at a bridge that in two thousand and three, we did a minimal amount of manage, or minimal amount of repair to and maintenance. And really, if you look at the pictures in the two thousand and three WHKS report, they look very similar to the way they are right now. The deterioration has not progressed at that alarm, alarming a rate. And I think if we go through with a twenty-year fix and replace all the floor beams, everything that you can see, put a new deck on it, I think twenty will get you thirty at least. I mean, just my opinion, but I don't have anything to base that.
That, that may be the case, but, you know, and again, I, I'm in favor, I think, on, on the, the repair option. But I do agree with Edie that we need to be planning immediately, I mean, and, and I, we've been saying this anyways, or I've been saying this anyways. We need to be planning for that Cedar River Parkway Bridge. We need to be looking at, is there another crossing there in the south side that we can find?
Absolutely.
That, that's what the repair option is buying for us, is the time to get those plans in. But I agree, we have to, we have to get at it. We can't just sit there and say, well, that's for another council in twenty years to decide. We have to start that.
My concern is twen- twenty years, I'll, I'll probably be six feet under in twenty years, again, aging myself. But twenty years, the town is going to change significantly, a lot of different places, and what is this town going to look like in twenty years? And it's, and it's not going to be in that neighborhood, um, because they're going to be enjoying the neighborhood they've got today. It's going to be growing, it's going to be growing along Tenth Avenue, it's going to be growing, you know, Steve Dara's got developments, this is going to make it accessible to that. The Tenth Avenue will make it accessible to Steve Dara's new development up there. So the town is going to grow. What I want to do is find out in twenty years, is this the place for the bridge? That, so.
Uh, David, in twenty years, you're not going to be six feet under unless you're a lot older than you look. Well, I just want to say something about, uh, that was meant as a compliment. Uh, I, I want to say something about language. I get a little troubled when I hear, pardon me for bringing up politicians here, but politicians like to tell me what the American people want. And oftentimes, it's not what I want and they have never asked me. Uh, I suspect they're speaking for some of the American people. I do think in, uh, our language about the city, we should be careful about saying, this is what the people in the neighborhood want. We obviously have people in this neighborhood and across the city, because Mr. Freeman lives next down, down the road from me, who are on both sides or every side of this. And I have no doubt that, you know, whatever we decide, some of our neighbors are going to be really unhappy. Which makes me wonder why I agreed to run for city council when I think about that, until I realize it's a tough job, somebody's got to do it, so that's fine. But I, I really think, you know, we, we should be fair. There are some people in the first ward who really want a new bridge. There are some people in the first ward who really don't. That doesn't make it easy. Having said that, if I may, I'll just tell you what I'm thinking about. I had a really interesting conversation with Duane Little yesterday and, um, I give him credit for staying awake, he's still here. Uh, give him credit for showing up every time he does. I don't agree with Duane very often, actually, Duane, you probably know that. But, um, I thought it was a very interesting conversation. And, uh, Duane's been championing, uh, taking a look at a, a company in Michigan that actually takes old bridges apart and puts them back together again. And I thought it was a little bit of a crazy idea, so he told me to go look it up, so I did. I went to their website. Two things struck me. The company is in the city where my brother lived for forty years, and I never ran into them, but it's a new company. They built a bridge in Bridgeport, Michigan, which is where my parents lived for thirty years. I've never seen this bridge because I don't go looking for old iron bridges to drive over. But, uh, you can find it on Google Maps and there it is. I would suggest that unless we're, uh, ready to finalize this time, and I know everybody would love to do it, it would not be a bad thing to have, um, the Box Steel Company come and tell us what would happen if they took our bridge apart and put it back together. And, uh, how long would that last? I suspect that the cost of it would be, I think, I think it would be cost-effective. And if it doesn't look like a good fit, maybe we still want to do a two-lane bridge. Honestly, I've been impressed with everything that everybody has said to me. One of the most persuasive for me has been from, um, the two Mr. Myers. John Meyer, who's a engineer, has an awful lot of interesting stuff to say. But Don Meyer wants to do something for the Historical Society and he really hit a nerve with me because I'm a history freak and, um, I do like the bridge. And I did say, once upon a time, that there is something about this bridge, one lane, that has a civilizing influence in our city, and what it does, it makes you take your turn. It makes you treat other people like, unless, except for these guys that won't take their turn, there are a few of those. And if you're in this room tonight, uh, start taking your turn. But, uh, you know, there's something, some value to that. It just seems to me that a, a one-lane crossing, if that bridge is healthy, if you can make it healthy, can serve a lot of purposes for a lot of people. And I say that at the risk of disappointing people who really think we had to have a new bridge there. So that's, that's my view.
I think there's another alternative on the replacement side that we haven't looked, looked into, that a citizen wrote us about this week, which, uh, I thought was interesting too in terms of getting, um, you know, some sort of prefab, uh, pre-construction. And, and, and those pictures that he sent us look, look very, look more historic. I mean, obviously, they're not, they're new, but, um, but I guess we, what I think, Mike, about Box Steel and about the suggestion, uh, we got to look at this prefab company, uh, on the replacement side, rather than the repair side, which Box Steel would be, um, is, you know, I think maybe those are, those are things down the road. I mean, once we decide whether we want to replace or repair according to the options we have here, I'm, I'm guessing that doesn't preclude us from then looking into other companies that do it different ways. You know, if we, if we end up going the repair side, uh, we can get more information from, from Box Steel and, and a bid. If we decide to go the replacement side, uh, maybe these concrete bridges aren't the only way to go and it's worth a little bit more research to see, uh, you know, what other options are and what those would cost. So I guess that's why I would rather move us along. I, I, I just, I see us putting this off and putting this off and putting this off. That's the common theme, honestly, in my opinion, of, uh, all of our discussions.
I'm not sure we can look at different options for replacement because we're basing our decision on the replacement cost, though, right?
Yeah, but I mean, I, maybe I'm wrong, Dave, but I'm guessing that, uh, if we, you know, if we look at other options, it's probably not going to be more expensive. Maybe I'm wrong about that. I mean, maybe somewhat more in terms of aesthetic details that one can add. And I think we even got a little bit of information from Casey on that, what that additional cost would be by a percentage. I think he quoted a percentage of the overall cost, uh, when he was showing us those pictures. So I, I guess I'm thinking with these, uh, large amounts for replacement at least that we're talking about, I, I would be surprised if we looked into options that were more expensive.
Just to, at face value, to me, a repair is taking it apart and putting it back together. So if we look at a company that specializes that and versus someone else, I, to me, uh, the repair process is taking it apart and putting it back together with new materials, so I'm a little confused on the conversation there, but.
Yeah, and I think for Mike's sake, we would, we would include that company. We always said they're welcome to bid, just like everybody else, but they just don't have the, what it takes, I think, we do WHKS level. Do you want to weigh in, Wes?
I just, I'm ready to vote, but I, I, I would say, I, I agree with Mike, though, that if we, I'm going to vote to repair it. So I don't see why when we go off for bids, we can't have Box Steel give us a bid on what they would do, so. I mean, WHKS has to approve it because they're our DOT, they don't necessarily have to do the works.
Right.
Correct. We, and that'd been, as far as I know, the posture all along, we, that's our response to. Last comments, we're going for a vote. All in favor of repair, raise your right hand. Both people who want to replace, we are going to repair. Let me thank everyone for our process. May we rally around our decision.
Are we done, or are we going to choose which replacement option?
Well, we're gonna talk about that. We got 10 to 10. Pleasure. Should we try to tackle which of the options? You ready? Okay, way we go. Finish her up. Of the options, who wants to begin?
I'll just, I'll start. I mean, I, I think we might as well go with a 20-year repair, but I would, instead of just using WHKS's figures, I would, I would like to have Box Steel look at it, like Mike said, and see what they have to think.
I think that's the.
That's, but that's a given. We're gonna put it out for.
So, I mean, I would like to do what it would take to get a 20-year fix to it, but let's give some other people an opportunity to give us their numbers as well.
Maybe, maybe just in kind of fairness to what Edie, because I would have been, if we decided to repair it, to replace it, I would have been opposed to start all over again, because I kind of defeated the purpose of everything that got us to today. I wonder if we can, with you, if you agree, the repair, maybe using WHKS as the basis. And if someone can give us a better deal, a shinier, quicker, faster, than.
That's my, yeah. If, if, if someone can do it for less money, if someone can start sooner, all that kind of stuff.
And I hope it would get to that eventually, so. Would, would it be not to, sorry, maybe you've got a plan. I can let you go, but I wonder, would we do this kind of the same way as maybe to narrow down the options?
Well, this would, well, I'm, well, maybe. I don't know.
We could agree, like, start with the five.
Five, 10, just a hand vote.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
At least get rid of, get rid of one. I don't want to, I don't want to sway people.
I'm for the 20. I'm with Wes on repair. That would be option B, as I understand it.
Maybe start with the five.
So all in favor, it's a good plan. Thank you, David. All in favor of the five-year plan, please raise your right hand. All in favor of the five-year plan plus the enhancements of, of sandblasting, painting, and doing some cement work, which would take us out to 15 years, and would put us in around how much money? 1.?
1.6 million, roughly.
I like that one. But from what I guess I was told, that excludes us from getting the historical funding, if we get that. So that's where I would, I guess it has to be over 20 years to get historical funding, is what I'm told?
That's right. I mean, that's what, that's when I was talking with James today, that's what I understood.
So all in favor of the five-year enhanced, which takes us out 15 years, please raise your right hand. Not, I'm not raising my hand, asking for the hand raise. Okay. So would someone like to make a formal motion that would be pleasing to our city clerk that we engage, because we want to use something that fits in with the motion that we have in our pamphlet for a 20-year fix?
I guess.
I would move Resolution 16-08 to complete a 20-year repair on the Third Street, Third Street Bridge.
Which is option B. Do we need to identify it? Yeah. Yeah.
Which would be option B on the WHKS report, 2015.
You have that, Carla? Second, please.
I'll second that.
Motion then seconded. Council discussion. Hmm. There better not be.
Just for clarification, that, that option does not raise the current bridge, correct?
It does not what?
Raise the current bridge.
Because then we're in a whole different price.
Because I think that was option A, to elevate the existing bridge.
Right.
Uh, right. Yeah.
I, I guess my only comment on that, we'd go back to what I had said before, that I think, and what Edie's comment was on this, that this is the route that I'm comfortable going with. But we definitely need to have some kind of, whether it's noted in there, that planning for future crossings need to be done as well with us. Maybe not as part of this project, but.
To me, I'm solid, 10th Avenue needs to be done, be bonded in 2020.
Yeah, but I, I think we need to start right away for Third Street again, too.
I think we're gonna have to pay for it once, and now we're gonna have to pay for it again, and we're gonna, and it's gonna be, if it don't.
My, my thought is, after this 20 years, is that if we've got the other vehicle, vehicle crossings, that this could be converted and maintain the historical nature, but maybe convert it to pedestrian so that it's long-lasting. And it's just something that, again, 20, 40, 50 years from now, our kids, our kids' kids will be coming and being able to see that part of the historic wave really is.
I guess what I'm saying is, the way I'm saying, 20 years isn't that far out. And when I think about it, I think we're still gonna need a crossing there. And.
The most heated.
A vehicular crossing.
Yes, the most heated com, or comments I've gotten from folks is, I want to get my car across there.
That's right. And to downtown area, not so far east. So I, I, that's why I said earlier, I think we're going to need three. And so we will, in my opinion, need to turn our attention immediately to both 20 years from now, Third Street, not just now, Third Street, 20 years from now, Third Street, and start to pave the path for that. But then, of course, Cedar River Parkway.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, the discussion could, could be, is Third Street really the best location?
I believe it is. I'm just saying that right now. From what I'm looking at, I believe it is.
From, from a driving standpoint, personally, okay, having driven around the town delivering pizzas for the past decade, basically, the weaving back and forth to get to Third Street isn't necessarily the most practical. I would much rather go up First Street and turn on Bremer and go across than.
I think you're gonna affect many more homes. And it's probably going to be a, a longer bridge, as I understand it, potentially. So.
I, I think that Eighth Street crossing area might not affect any homes.
I would, I would like to challenge this. I think in 20 years, you're gonna be looking at this all completely different.
Exactly.
I, I use the story, when I was a kid, we used to talk about horses at Thanksgiving. Now, at Thanksgiving, we talked about drones farming. So things change quickly. And who knows, it might be different.
It's not a very long time.
I can understand the horses, not that long.
Yeah, they have electricity.
Didn't have cell phones 20 years ago.
As since the time, maybe in 10 years, we could pick this conversation up again, because it's, who knows where it's gonna be. So with all due respect to my hour drive home, we can finish the place tonight sometime.
Did we have a second to that motion?
Yeah. Chair.
So we're, we're now discussing?
Yep.
That was my only additional, really, was the planning needs to be emphasized that we.
I think we should do, I mean, what the previous council did was, they decided to repair the bridge and then create a maintenance fund, so that if something did come up in an inspection, it could be fixed, and the bridge wouldn't just suddenly be closed for a whole year, two years. So that's something we need to be proactive on going forward, is once it's repaired, let's make sure it doesn't close again. So let's be on top of these inspections. Let's have a maintenance fund set aside, like the previous council did in 2003. That might not be enough, but that's something to look into then.
20, 20 years is not a death curve. It's basically an index. So we're not, we're not gonna kill the bridge at 20. It's just a, an engineering design level.
And usually, they're on the safe side, so.
Yeah.
Assuming a flood doesn't take it out in five. Not to sober you for that point, without elevating it, who's to say? So again, getting to back to.
We, we are.
We really don't know, so we'll just please move on.
And we're gonna be basically paying for it twice, because we're gonna pay for this one, then we're gonna start paying for a replacement of it, that we could get to the same price. But that's what we decided, and I'm supporting it. And I think the process has been wonderful. I thank the public, and I thank everyone here. Are we ready for the vote? Roll call vote, please.
Resident check.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Gane.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Angus.
Unanimously approved. We are on our way to a new era. And thank you, one and all. But we're not done here as a council.
Just a quick question, then, to follow up. How soon will we go out to get bids for repairs? And like, how many companies will we look at? And can we do specifically do contact?
Let's handle that another time, but good questions, it's okay to put it out.
I mean, I would think we want to get that going as soon as possible.
Exactly. But let's ha, we have another meeting.
Specs and engineering, it's gonna take a while, just get ready.
Yeah, we gotta digest this. We have our monthly reports to, for commissions and boards. We have the library board minutes from January 12th. Any comments officially received? We have the monthly financials for January. Comments officially received? The airport commission minutes, January 14th officially received? Planning and zoning, February 4th comments officially received? Golf commission minutes, February 9th officially received? Staff comments? Not this hour, 10 o'clock, huh? City council comments from this side.
None.
This side.
Just a quick comment, at least at my desk, it looks like we've got updated budget numbers with new levy that looks to be lower than last year.
Yes, sir. It's about two cents lower.
This is taking all our conversation into account, and this is what would be presented at the public hearing.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is that available on the website, if folks want to go look at it?
Not at this point. It will be after it's finalized, and we get the budget all compiled and everything. If you'd like it online, oh, I don't even know where I'd put it. I can put it under accounting, I suppose, and, under that department. Are you?
If I understand, this is as close to final as it's gonna get prior to our vote.
That's, that's the final I'm talking about.
So if, if folks want to review this and be able to provide input in the public hearing, we probably should make it available to them, just like we did the preliminary information as part of an agenda.
As part of an agenda, yes.
So, and I'm thinking the seriousness of this, I'm wondering if three or four days beforehand is enough time. Are we still getting agendas out?
Yeah, Tuesday before. Is that okay?
Can we get it up earlier?
You can, I, I'll give it a, I'll give it a good try.
I think, I mean, two weeks, we've got a public, we've got two weeks.
I understand.
And we've got the public hearing on it. You can create just another hot link on the main page or on the.
Well, and that's what I was meaning by maybe we could put it on finances page, just the budget itself.
So I think especially the summary would be nice for people to see, you know, at least that, and then the details can be.
I'm not, I'm not saying no on that. I'm, I'm just saying, we'll just need to figure out.
I think once it's proposed, it actually goes to the state website, does it not? Once you submit it, I know county budget used to, once you submitted it, proposed it, it went to the state website to be viewed, and it kick an email back to you that it's been submitted. If not, we'll try and find a way to at least get the state documents out there, which is what would be presented overall. That's what would exist going forward as a comparison to past years. So we'll try to work to find something similar to that to get out.
Yeah, and if that doesn't work, how about we just put together a link, and then we'll just email it out like we would an agenda, with the link attached. Is that okay? We just email it out to.
Take this, turn it into a PDF.
We'll find a way. Yeah, we'll find a way.
I have a memory issue on that, as far as how much I can do. That's why I always see it.
Iron it out afterwards. Other comments?
I would, my, my only comment on that was that in two weeks, we have the budget hearing and the public hearings for that.
Thank you. No more comments. A motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Okay. Motion second. All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
Adjourned.